Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, July 23, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Members of the council, members of the public in attendance, it is now 10:15 a.m. And we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and recognition ceremonies scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Weiss. Mr. Weiss for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is cool. This is Ambassador Yuval Rotem, Council General of the State of Israel. This is Rocky Delgado, the City Attorney of the City of Los Angeles. And right here, you see frankly, the promise, the future promise of both the City of Los Angeles and the United States of America. You see the future promise of the State of Israel. And you see the future promise of an even more harmonious period of relations between our two countries because of these two people and people like them, but in particular because of Yuval. Yuval and I were just joking that he's had a couple going aways. And this is his official going away from L.A. City Hall. And I had the opportunity to speak at a going away event of his a few weeks ago. And everywhere you go, not just in the Jewish community, but in the Los Angeles community at large, you see people who are just shaking their heads, "We cannot believe Yuval Rotem is leaving Los Angeles." I don't know of any representative of a foreign country who has done more for not only his country here in Los Angeles, but who has done more for the community in which he has found himself planted temporarily than Yuval Rotem. And one thing in particular that is literally represented by the four of us standing up here, I'm now joined by Council President Alex Padilla, has been Yuval's extraordinary efforts to bring the Latino community and the Jewish community together in Los Angeles and internationally. His efforts in that regard are extraordinary. And as I remarked at his last going away, I would love to have the opportunity to just see a tenth of the cable traffic you sent back from Los Angeles over the past several years describing L.A... Mr. Villarosa, please come up and join us. Councilmember Antonio Villarosa, who was Speaker of the State Assembly forged such an incredibly close and meaningful bond with the State of Israel and with Ambassador Rotem. His ability to put, not only to have his finger on the pulse of Los Angeles, but to figure out not just what ails American-Israeli relations, but what ails intergroup relations in Los Angeles, and to try to do something about it while he was here, those are the sort of things that he will be remembered for and for which he will be missed. But I want all of you to know that Yuval Rotem is not going back to Israel to fade into the sunset. I have every expectation that we will see him, we will see him at some point very, very soon, back on the Israeli stage, back on the national stage. And it is my most fervent personal hope that we will one day soon have Yuval Rotem back on the international stage. Because this is a man who, amongst all the extraordinarily capable people in Israeli public life, this is a man whom Israel needs now more than ever. And we in Los Angeles will start missing now more than ever. Thank you, Yuval.
Let me just echo some of the comments made by our great council member. Yuval Rotem has been a great leader for his country, Israel, but he has been a great leader for our city, Los Angeles, as well. I have to tell you that whenever I needed to know what was going on in Los Angeles, I would call Yuval. Because he knew more about it than anybody else I asked. And he was entrenched in what was going on in the local communities here in Los Angeles because he believed in it. You know, many in his position often are the spokesperson, are the face of the country that he or she represents. But this is an individual who not only talked the talk, but walked the walk and did things that were important for our community. Again, I will echo what Jack pointed out. He tried very hard to build a relationship between the Jewish community and the Latino community here in Los Angeles and has been very successful in doing so. He is somebody that I look up to. He's somebody that I think is a thinker, who can think well about the issues of the day, whether they be international issues or they be local issues. He knows how to work through those issues and find good solutions to tough problems that we all face on a daily basis. Yuval is articulate, as I said, thoughtful, one of the smartest people I've met. And I believe that he and all of the people in Los Angeles will have a long-lasting relationship well beyond his time here in Los Angeles. He did spend a little more time here than ordinarily someone in his position would spend here, and that's because of the great work he was doing. I also agree with Jack that on an international stage, this is a person who we will see time and time again and will be proud of that fact. So it is with great pleasure that we celebrate the time that you've spent here in Los Angeles and that we anticipate celebrations of the time that you will spend on the international stage in the future. Thank you very much for your time for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. And colleagues, for those of you who are concerned, please rest assured that the reason we have such confidence that Yuval Rotem's tenure in diplomatic service is not coming to an end, we have all the confidence in the world that is continuing, is because he hasn't only been serving for the last few years here in Los Angeles. In fact, his diplomatic service began in 1985 when he was first selected for an overseas posting in 1989, served as chief spokesperson for Israel's permanent mission to the United Nations, as well as special counsel general for New York. And so his diplomatic service is working on 20 years now. He became an ambassador only in 2003, becoming the youngest Israeli ambassador ever, if I understand correctly. So for those of us on the younger side trying to break some barriers, we have some very good company here and he sets the bar pretty, pretty high. But I just want to take a moment to personally thank him for his wonderful support, his wonderful vision for the importance of bringing the Latino community and the Jewish community here, not only in Los Angeles, but throughout the United States. Because Los Angeles is certainly a snapshot for what the rest of the country will look like in the next 20 years and what the rest of the world will look like over the next 50 years. He's been a visionary in that regard. He was also very helpful to Councilmember Weiss, City Attorney Delgado, and I on our recent visit to Israel just in November. They were really bending over backwards trying to accommodate any inquiry or request that we had. And so a personal thank you to you as well. And without speaking too, too long here, let me also bring up another one of our colleagues who has had the fortunate opportunity to visit the State of Israel when he was in the state legislature, our colleague Antonio Villarosa.
Thank you, Colonel. Thank you, Colin. So, President, actually I've had an occasion to visit Israel on two occasions. And I can tell you that on those visits, you get a sense for why peace in the Middle East and ensuring the security of Israel is so important, not just to Israel, but to the world. There have been a long line of great council generals from Israel here in Los Angeles. Many of us have known the other council generals who were the predecessors of Yuval. But I can tell you that those of us who have known them, this is a man who from the very first week he was here was, in many ways, the quintessential peacemaker. Because when you think about one word to describe Yuval, this is a man who has made it his passion in the five years that he's been here to bridge communities, to create links and dialogues with not just Israelis, but Latinos and African-Americans and Asians and all of the groups. He's among the council generals, he's been that glue, if you will, that has been able to get the many communities that make up Los Angeles to talk to one another. The fact that he's done that with such passion and such success gives me reason to believe, as Jack said so very well, that he's going to make another new impact in Israel. And I expect that one day we may see an ambassador from Israel to the United States named Yuval Rotem. Congratulations, shalom, my brother.
Thank you. We also have Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. Not yet. We still have more compliments, more accolades. I remember the events that I've attended with you, the events at the Beverly Hills Hotel commemorating Israel's birthday, Israel's birthday 56 was the last, we had a festival at Woodley Park. I remember seeing you recently at a movie premiere with your lovely wife. You've been an ambassador, a council general who has reached out, embraced Los Angeles. I represent the southwest San Fernando Valley, a very large Jewish population. That population has been embraced by you with your peace, with your tranquility, with your message to work for peace and for harmony within the community. And it's worked. We have religious services now between the Catholic Church and the temple, which was never done before. Musical activities, festivals between the Catholic Church, the Interfaith Council in San Fernando Valley has been very effective. And your leadership has brought that about. And I mentioned to you that I plan to visit Israel, I've never been there, but I do plan to visit there sometime in my lifetime and visit you when I'm there. Hopefully you won't be back here as an ambassador before I get there to visit you. But your connection to the people of Los Angeles has been tremendous, the accolades, mean sincerity from us who have been witness to what you have really tried to bring about. And it's sad to see you go. It's sad to see all the work you've done for the last five years, all the events, all the success. And we will continue working with the council general that's assigned here, as we know, term limits, you have term limits like we have term limits. Your term limit says they're now going to assign you to another jurisdiction. But you've really had an impact, you've really had an impression, you've really brought people together, you have bridged people together within the community of Los Angeles. And I congratulate you for that. I wish you well with your family. May you have a safe trip and may God continue to give you blessings and shalom to you and to your family. Thank you.
Councilmember Grul.
Thank you, Ms. Misekowsky. And I too want to stand up and say thank you to our wonderful council general. And I think as Mr. Villarosa said, there have been many extraordinary council generals, but none as extraordinary as you. And you really have, I think, looked to develop those relationships, Latino community, African-American community, citywide. You've been everywhere, everyone knows who you are. And I think that I have not had the pleasure of visiting Israel, I'm looking forward to that. So I will be calling you as we, my family and I hopefully will be able to travel to Israel. But we just want to say thank you because we do have that special bond with the State of Israel. And the council general's position is so important here that we have that relationship. And as you can see, not only the gentlemen standing around you, but many of us around this horseshoe feel that that relationship is critical to the future of the city. And so I just wanted to say I've enjoyed, as we talked this morning, I met you when I was at DreamWorks and have enjoyed the relationship now that I became a council member. So good luck. We know that we are also going to say we knew you when, when, because I know you are on the fast track to be one of the leaders, yeah, as Jack said, really fast track. So we'll be watching and congratulating you as you move up. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Councilmember Parks.
This is a man whom Israel needs now more than ever, and we in Los Angeles will start missing now more than ever. Thank you, Yuval.
Let me just echo some of the comments made by our great council member. Yuval Rotem has been a great leader for his country, Israel, but he has been a great leader for our city, Los Angeles, as well. I have to tell you that whenever I needed to know what was going on in Los Angeles, I would call Yuval, because he knew more about it than anybody else I asked. And he was entrenched in what was going on in the local communities here in Los Angeles because he believed in it. You know, many in his position often are the spokesperson, are the face of the country that he or she represents, but this is an individual who not only talked the talk, but walked the walk and did things that were important for our community. Again, I will echo what Jack pointed out. He tried very hard to build a relationship between the Jewish community and the Latino community here in Los Angeles and has been very successful in doing so. He is somebody that I look up to. He's somebody that I think is a thinker, who can think well about the issues of the day, whether they be international issues or they be local issues. He knows how to work through those issues and find good solutions to tough problems that we all face on a daily basis. Yuval is articulate, as I said, thoughtful, one of the smartest people I've met, and I believe that he and all of the people in Los Angeles will have a long-lasting relationship well beyond his time here in Los Angeles. He did spend a little more time here than ordinarily someone in his position would spend here, and that's because of the great work he was doing. I also agree with Jack that on an international stage, this is a person who we will see time and time again and will be proud of that fact. So it is with great pleasure that we celebrate the time that you've spent here in Los Angeles and that we anticipate celebrations of the time that you will spend on the international stage in the future. Thank you very much for your time for Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you. And colleagues, for those of you who are concerned, please rest assured that the reason we have such confidence that Yuval Rotem's tenure in diplomatic service is not coming to an end, we have all the confidence in the world that is continuing, is because he hasn't only been serving for the last few years here in Los Angeles. In fact, his diplomatic service began in 1985, when he was first selected for an overseas posting in 1989, served as chief spokesperson for Israel's permanent mission to United Nations as well as special counsel general for New York. And so his diplomatic service is working on 20 years now. He became an ambassador only in 2003, becoming the youngest Israeli ambassador ever, if I understand correctly. So for those of us on the younger side trying to break some barriers, we have some very good company here, and he sets the bar pretty, pretty high. But I just want to take a moment to personally thank him for his wonderful support, his wonderful vision for the importance of bringing the Latino community and the Jewish community here, not only in Los Angeles but throughout the United States, because Los Angeles is certainly a snapshot for what the rest of the country will look like in the next 20 years and what the rest of the world will look like over the next 50 years. He's been a visionary in that regard. He was also very helpful to Councilmember Weiss, City Attorney Delgadoio, and I on our recent visit to Israel just in November. They were really bending over backwards trying to accommodate any inquiry or request that we had. And so a personal thank you to you as well. And without speaking too, too long here, let me also bring up another one of our colleagues who has had the fortunate opportunity to visit the state of Israel when he was in the state legislature, our colleague Antonio Villarreal.
Thank you, Colonel. President, actually, I've had an occasion to visit Israel on two occasions, and I can tell you that on those visits, you get a sense for why peace in the Middle East and ensuring the security of Israel is so important, not just to Israel but to the world. There have been a long line of great counsel generals from Israel here in Los Angeles. Many of us have known the other counsel generals who were the predecessors of Yuval. But I can tell you that those of us who have known them, this is a man who, from the very first week he was here, was, in many ways, the quintessential peacemaker. Because when you think about one word to describe Yuval, this is a man who has made it his passion in the five years that he's been here to bridge communities, to create links and dialogues with not just Israelis but Latinos and African-Americans and Asians and all of the groups. He's among the counsel generals. He's been that glue, if you will, that has been able to get the many communities that make up Los Angeles to talk to one another. The fact that he's done that with such passion and such success gives me reason to believe, as Jack said so very well, that he's going to make another new impact in Israel. And I expect that one day we may see an ambassador from Israel to the United States named Yuval Rotem. Congratulations. Shalom, my brother.
Thank you. We also have Councilmember Zein.
Thank you. Not yet. We still have more compliments, more accolades. I remember the events that I've attended with you, the events at the Beverly Hills Hotel commemorating Israel's birthday, Israel's birthday 56 was the last. We had a festival at Woodley Park. I remember seeing you recently at a movie premiere with your lovely wife. You've been an ambassador, a counsel general who has reached out, embraced Los Angeles. I represent the southwest San Fernando Valley, a very large Jewish population. That population has been embraced by you with your peace, with your tranquility, with your message to work for peace and for harmony within the community, and it's worked. We have religious services now between the Catholic Church and the temple, which was never done before. Musical activities, festivals between the Catholic Church, the Interfaith Council in the San Fernando Valley has been very effective, and your leadership has brought that about. And I mentioned to you that I plan to visit Israel. I've never been there, but I do plan to visit there sometime in my lifetime and visit you when I'm there. Hopefully, you won't be back here as an ambassador before I get there to visit you. But your connection to the people of Los Angeles has been tremendous. The accolades mean sincerity from us who have been witness to what you have really tried to bring about, and it's sad to see you go. It's sad to see all the work you've done for the last five years, all the events, all the success, and we will continue working with the counsel general that's assigned here. As we know, term limits, you have term limits like we have term limits. Your term limit says they're now going to assign you to another jurisdiction, but you've really had an impact, you've really had an impression, you've really brought people together, you have bridged people together within the community of Los Angeles, and I congratulate you for that. I wish you well with your family. May you have a safe trip, and may God continue to give you blessings, and shalom to you and to your family. Thank you.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Msakowski, and I too want to stand up and say thank you to our wonderful counsel general. And I think, as Mr. Villarreal said, there have been many extraordinary counsel generals, but none as extraordinary as you. And you really have, I think, looked to develop those relationships, Latino community, African-American community, citywide. You've been everywhere. Everyone knows who you are, and I think that I have not had the pleasure of visiting Israel. I'm looking forward to that, so I will be calling you as we, my family and I hopefully will be able to travel to Israel. But we just want to say thank you because we do have that special bond with the state of Israel, and the counsel general's position is so important here that we have that relationship. And as you can see, not only the gentlemen standing around you, but many of us around this horseshoe feel that that relationship is critical to the future of the city. And so I just wanted to say I've enjoyed, as we talked this morning, I met you when I was at DreamWorks, and have enjoyed the relationship now that I became a council member. So good luck. We know that we are also going to say we knew you when, because I know you are on the fast track to be one of the leaders, yeah, as Jack said, really fast track. So we'll be watching and congratulating you as you move up. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yuval, I just wanted to stand and say thank you for all the things you did for the city and particularly the police department when I was there, that we stood side by side when we had the event at the Jewish Community Center, the shooting, and then we would often call you after reading the New York Times at 12 o'clock at night to find out what is going on in Israel and Middle East, and we'd call and find out what impact that would have on the city of LA. And you've always been there, you've always given us great guidance, and even when we had news conferences to allay the fears of the community as to what was going on, you were the leader in that area. And also, I'd like to just thank you for your hand that you extended into the black community to develop even stronger ties as it relates to the day-to-day relationships, the support of a variety of organizations, and you've been the most visible counsel general that I've seen, and I think you've paid a great deal of dividends to the city of LA, and so thank you.
And finally, Councilmember Laban.
Much congratulations. Too bad they didn't pick you up in Hollywood because you've got a great smile. And that great smile brings great warmth and friendship, which is so important for all people. Our city, as you know, next to Washington, New York, has the highest concentrations of concerts, over 86, and you represented your country well. Our sister-city relationship with the lot is thriving. We just had a sister-city meeting this week where we talked about the tours that we planned for the coming years to there. Good luck to you. It's very difficult, Dennis, as you mentioned. We may go home to our homes, but a diplomat has to travel throughout the world to represent his country, so that's a great credit to you as you personally are committed to representing your country and do it well. Congratulations to you and Israel, and good luck in your new posting, and thanks for all that you did to Los Angeles. And the great thing about Los Angeles, if you look around to this great chamber, is this is the people of the world who are here in this city. Forty-two percent of us are born somewhere else or came from somewhere else, and that strength that Los Angeles gives itself, I hope and I know rubbed off on you to give you greater strength as you continue in your service. Congratulations. Thank you.
We do have one more. Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief, but I just want to thank you so much for all that you've given to us, counsel general. And when I was in the state legislature, I was made aware of many, many programs and organizations that you and many of the people that you've worked very closely with have been doing not only for Los Angeles but for this entire country. Let me give you one example. When it comes to teaching tolerance, which is something that we all need to continue to learn from and to grow with in our hearts and our minds, certainly in the future generations, so I just want to thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to work with you and making sure that we've supported these organizations to the tune of millions of dollars, and I was able to continue that legacy. But speaking of legacies, we're going to miss you, but your presence is going to be felt here for decades and decades to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now Ambassador.
Colleagues, if you'll allow me, on behalf of all of us on the city council and our city attorney, Rocky Delgadoio, let me present this resolution to Ambassador Yuval Rotem. And I'll just read the resolved language here. Now therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council officially recognizes you for your diplomatic service to the state of Israel and ongoing friendship with the people of Los Angeles and the United States of America. We wish you the best.
Thank you very much for all those compliments. I'm really overwhelmed and quite moved. In five years of serving in Los Angeles, I have gained a deep appreciation for the constant effort that you have put into keeping Los Angeles the most diverse, the most multicultural, and the most unique city. As counsel general, I have had the opportunity to travel extensively around Los Angeles, and driving here today reminded me of what I most love about Los Angeles. The ten, a place I spent a good percentage of my tenure in Los Angeles on, gave me a taste of the flavor LA has to offer. Starting in Santa Monica, moving east, in the Jewish neighborhood of Pico Corridor has become like a second home. Another few traffic jam brought me to downtown, to the heart of the city, not just one of the world's major business center, but also the home of Angeles Lakers and the Clippers, which in all my years here was the best reason to turn off my cellphone for a couple of hours. Traveling just a little further east made me many friends in the Latino community. The relationship that we have formed with the Latino community is one of my proudest accomplishments as counsel general. I have traveled these freeways and others often during my time here, visiting a variety of communities along the way. The journey has been curvy and bumpy at times and never without challenges, but always interesting and rewarding. What I have learned here has given me a Thomas Guide of sorts to maneuver and navigate for our differences to arrive ultimately to our similarities. As I look at you, member of the city council of Los Angeles, I am again reminded at how unique and wonderful this place is. You each represent a different backgrounds, you have a different cultural stories to tell, but all of you work together from an excellent leadership team. Thank you for helping me and supporting me during what have been the most difficult period for the state of Israel, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve in the new gateway to America. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador, and members and city attorney, Rocky Delgadoio, for coming down this morning. We will have our next presentation done by Councilmember Dennis Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. Day of celebration here in City Hall is always a wonderful experience, and we're here to celebrate K-Earth 101 and KNX News Radio 107 on your dial. Come on up. K-Earth 101 and KNX 1070, when you want music and traffic and all the information. But we have with us this morning some wonderful people from those two radio stations, KNX 1070 and K-Earth 101. And this is regarding the Bob Hope USO Center at Los Angeles International Airport, and the executive director, retired Brigadier General Mike Tyleman, Brigadier General. Thank you for being here. And we have KNX representatives, promotions director Howard Freshman, Howard. Ed Pyle, news director at KNX. If you like the news, that's Ed Pyle who makes that happen at KNX Radio 1070 on your dial. He actually would be like the announcer or something. Then we've got K-Earth 101. We've got on-air personalities, Gary Bryan, a host of the morning show, Gary. Karen Tobin, Director of Marketing. Karen and I have been, we've known each other for many, many, many years. Vivian Porter, Public Affairs Director, who we hear at K-Earth 101. Vivian. Jay Coffey, Program Director. And Maureen Lazard, Vice President, General Manager. Did I pronounce that right? Lazard? These are the representatives that we've invited today to City Council to acknowledge the wonderful work they've done for our military personnel. Infinity Radio, which owns KNX and K-Earth, raised more than $275,000 in a show of support for our military personnel and their families during the just completed second annual radio-thon for the Bob Hope Hollywood USO at LAX. And there was a facility at LAX that was designated on airport property, but the facility didn't have any of the amenities. It was simply a facility. And through the cooperative effort of KNX 1070 and K-Earth 101, they were able to put together a facility through the last two years of radio-thons, which is close to a half a million dollars, I understand, in the last two years, $275,000 this year. The amenities for our service personnel is their traveling through Los Angeles to destinations. K-Earth personality Gary Bryan, in the morning led celebrities and civic leaders who lent their support for the 36-hour radio-thon. The money raised will go towards completing the expansion of the Bob Hope Hollywood USO at LAX. The donations will also support volunteer and operational programs. The Bob Hope Hollywood USO at LAX serves as a recreation and service area for American troops and their families on the move to and from duty stations worldwide. The center serves more than 25,000 troops annually and has been increasingly active due to the continuing conflicts overseas. The facility is a nonprofit and receives no government funding. A lot of people under the impression that the USO is a government-funded since it serves the military personnel. It does not receive any government funding and is a nonprofit organization. A team of 80-plus volunteers operates the center 18 hours a day, seven days a week. KNX and K-Earth, with their overwhelmingly generosity, have been able to improve the services for tens of thousands of military personnel who pass through the safe haven of LAX. And we want to congratulate K-Earth 101 and KNX 1070 for putting this together. And when this first came about, Brigadier General Mike Tyleman contacted me and said, "Councilman, we have cramped space at LAX for our USO facility for the military personnel, and we need to expand it." And he was running against every barricade and every bureaucratic and every red tape and you name it, and he ran into it. And we were able to finally move that, and that was through the efforts of Ted Stein, who was then the Airport Commission President, to move it forward. Since then, there's been two radio-thons, two consecutive years, and I say nearly a half a million dollars raised in those two radio-thons because of these two radio stations single-handedly going out there and devoting the hours and the time and the energy to raise the money so our military personnel and their families, as they travel through LAX, will have a safe haven, will have a place to take a shower, recreation, food, just some comfort. You can just imagine, you're a young soldier away from your family, going to battle, and you come from a small town, and you pass through LAX, this massive airport, and you're wandering around trying to find where is a place where I can be greeted, where is a place where I can sit down, where is a place where I can have some relaxation before I board that plane and fly to that destination in another land. That place is what the Bob Hope USO facility, LAX, is about. So our military personnel from all branches of the military are welcome there seven days a week, and it's because of the efforts of KNX, the efforts of K-Earth, and the efforts of retired Brigadier General Mike Tyleman that we were able to have this happen for our military personnel. So congratulations to K-Earth 101, congratulations to KNX, and there's still more to be done. And Brigadier General is going to give a little pitch, if anyone wants to write a check, to help out, because the project's not complete, but it's near completion. And I just want to personally thank, on behalf of all the military personnel and their families, that are able to use that facility for that safe haven as they travel through Los Angeles International Airport to foreign lands to protect our freedoms and liberties here in America. So Mike, I'm going to let you go first, and then we'll have Representative--
Ms. Zein, before you do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have Councilmember Laban.
Tom Laban, the master of Hollywood. Brigadier General Telemann, Gary Bryan, Ed Pyle, Howard, all the folks there, this is something very special that you've done, that you picked up the ball and did it for the people who come from Camp Pendleton, come from other parts of California, or threw Los Angeles out. And I just want to thank you, Dennis, I want to thank you, I want to thank Cindy Msakowski, and also our Department of Airports. I know there were a few hurdles, Michael, but they broke them down. So with that in mind, I usually call 1-800-K-EARTH to make my request. I'd just like to put this song on right now for 10 seconds. This is the King, because this is what you do to all those service people. You treat them real nice. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Treat Me Nice by the great King of Rock and Roll, Elvis Presley. Thank you. Hey, thank you, Tom Laban. Thank you, Madam President. Brigadier General Mike Tyleman.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, members of the city council. Ladies and gentlemen, the Bob Hope USO, good Lord, you know, it's kind of hard to follow and act like Dennis and Tom and Cindy and all these great people, they've said such wonderful things, and of course, they're all true. As Dennis mentioned a moment ago, we do serve the needs of some 26,000 soldiers, sailors, Marines, airmen, coastguardsmen, and women, all brave, young, American warriors who are putting their lives on the line and their families. And we serve these people through our Bob Hope Hollywood USO at LAX. And we couldn't have done it without the support of these great council people, the ones around us right now, and by the great efforts of KNX and K-Earth 101. We had very little. We had an empty little shoebox of a building, and it was only open a few hours a day, a few days a week. And fortunately, I had worked for Mr. Hope and the Hope family, and of course, another great patriot, Johnny Grant, who's a friend of all of ours here. And they both said, "Hey, come on, get involved in this thing and make it work." And with the people of the radio stations behind us, we were able to do that. And it's not just the active-duty component people who are out there coming through the USO. Every day, increasing numbers of reservists and National Guardsmen come through, and on what they call PCS, permanent change of stations, the families also are accompanying them. And if we didn't have the Bob Hope Hollywood USO, these brave warriors and their families would be sitting on their cold duffel bags out in the middle of a terminal where even the cost of basic foods and snacks is beyond the capacity of many of them to pay. When you see a civilian family out there and the dad is buying a couple of hot dogs and sandwiches and sodas and whatnot, and you look at the GI out there, and he says, "Jeez, this is going to be $35, that's a day's pay." And so they know now that they can come over to the Bob Hope Hollywood USO, and they'll be taken care of. And it's through the generosity of the people of the great city of Los Angeles and all the surrounding communities that we're able to take care of our soldiers. And we do need more, as Dennis started to say there. We need a little bit more going. We've raised some $600,000 on our radio-thons, and we still need to do a little bit more. And if the city council members have budgets, I know they're all talking, but they're probably making notes, if they have budgets that want to take care of the men and women of their community, are you listening? The men and women of your very own community. You are listening, I'm sure of that. We've got the, you know, these are great soldiers, they're sailors, they're Marines and airmen. They're all people who work in your community, they're business leaders, but when they put that uniform on, they're United States soldiers, and they're in your communities, and we need your help to keep them comfortable, warm, fed, and make their lives just a little bit easier. So please do help us when we call you, and we'll be calling you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to thank you for that call-out that you just made about helping these soldiers and their families. As a matter of fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we recognized in these chambers Carolyn Blasek, who used to be a former volunteer over at your facility, who has now sent out tens of thousands of individually packaged care packages to individual soldiers because she was inspired to do more by what you're doing there. So I just want to tell you, thank you for calling out the community to help, and I just want to point out that Carolyn Blasek was in fact inspired by you and your organization.
Carolyn, thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, but Carolyn Blasek is a wonderful lady, lives out in the valley, she's an attorney, and she came down to the USO as a volunteer a couple of years ago, and one of the things she wanted to do was get care packages out to the troops in Iraq and Afghanistan. And she started doing that, and then she said, "How can we do it in bigger numbers?" So she created Operation Gratitude, and I hooked her up with a California National Guard unit that's at the Encino Armory, and to date, they have sent more than 22,000 packages, not just one little care package at a time, boxloads of stuff that are going to our Los Angeles residents, all of the folks who need this stuff out in the desert. When she sent the first package to an all-female unit out there, they were just overwhelmed because they didn't have the basic necessities that a woman in combat needs. And so it's people like Carolyn Blasek and of all of our friends here who are making the lives of our soldiers not only more tolerable but a hell of a lot more comfortable, and we do need your help, and thank you for recognizing that.
I also thank you very much, and I also have a request of you possibly, if I ever need a radio announcement or something like that, could I borrow your voice?
You better believe it, baby.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike does have one of those voices. When you call the troops and you make that loud call, and it works. Wonderful, thank you. From KNX, we have Howard Freshman, the Promotions Director, who I'm sure wants to speak because if it wasn't for the Promotions Department, we wouldn't be able to put this program together. Howard, come on in here.
Thank you, Dennis. First of all, I hope KNX got everyone here a little bit more quickly this morning--
Yes.
--with our traffic report. Uh-- --with our traffic report. On behalf of KNX 1070, our General Manager, Vice President Pat Duffy, who could not be here today, we salute General Tylemann for all of your efforts, thank you for everything. We echo everything that's already been said, and we thank the City Council for your recognition this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Ed Pyle, the News Director, you have some words to say? You're the news man, so give us some news.
The only words I have to say is, “When is this over?” And it's just been great to have, to work in radio in LA for 35 years now and to see this kind of cooperation between radio stations. What we can get done when we work together is really amazing and wonderful, and what a great cause the Bob Hope USO at LAX is. Thanks for all who have contributed, and keep in mind that we may have another radio-thon next year, and we'd like everybody here to contribute generously.
Thank you, Ed. And there's a sister station, when you want the news, you go to KNX, when you want the music, you go to K-Earth. And the Vice President and General Manager, Maureen, from K-Earth 101.
Thank you so much. This is a wonderful honor, we appreciate it, all of us at K-Earth 101. I think the pride that we had, I mean, we're very committed to the community anyway, but the pride that we had in really helping our young men and women by raising money to provide better space for them at the USO is just a great honor. And I think the pride that I have of working with the staff that we have at K-Earth, who tirelessly were dedicated to this, and also to the listeners of K-Earth and KNX, who gave so generously to this terrific cause. Thank you.
Maureen, thank you. And Jay, Program Director, who wants to be a police officer. We're going to recruit Jay into the LAPD in the Reserve. He wanted to be a police officer, instead he went to radio, but we're bringing him back in to law enforcement.
Arresting audiences.
Arrested audiences, there you go, Jay.
I actually passed my exams for the LAPD in 1972. How I ended up in radio, I have no idea, but anyway. I'm one of the 42% of the people who moved here from, I'm from Northern California originally, and I'm glad to say that I'm celebrating my 27th year in LA radio, and it's just really the greatest city in the world, and we have the greatest listeners in the world. And I just want to put out a big thank you to Johnny Grant, who just went to the wall for helping us do this, and to everyone who was involved, and thank you to the City Council for having us here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And a voice you hear on K-Earth, Vivian Porter. Vivian.
Good morning. I just want to say thank you for the honor. It's been a pleasure working on this project, working with General Tylemann, Councilman Zine, we thank you for this honor. And what a great way to end a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Marketing, Karen Tobin. You're not going to speak, Karen? Just say hello.
Say hello, and thank you very much for this great honor, and it's great to be working with you again. I'm going to hand it over to Gary Bryant.
Thank you. That sounds like a switch on the radio. And Gary Bryant, the morning man, the morning man on K-Earth 101, the one that you hear spinning those, it's now CDs or something, it's no longer the radio.
I don't know what it is.
Whatever it is, but here it is, Gary Bryant.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. It's all on computer now, we push a button and there it is, so we don't know where it comes. We're so glad to be able to do this. When we called the USO and we got Mike on the phone, it sounded like we were calling ourselves, because he sounded like a K-Earth DJ. Hello, how are you doing? But then when we realized it was a charitable organization and we put this thing together, it was just our honor and our privilege to raise this money, but we never lose sight of the fact that the real heroes here are Mike and the 85 volunteers who manned the USO at LAX, and all of the troops, the men and women who go through that facility each and every year. In fact, just each week, there's more and more going through that facility. So thank you for this recognition, and thank you to everybody who donated and made this happen.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. For our next presentation, we will--
Tom has more.
No, no, just one real quick. Another great salute to Johnny Grant, who I know has watches the honorary mayor of Hollywood, who does so much for the USO. Everybody give Johnny Grant a big hand for all he does there. Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Johnny Grant has been the spirit of the USO for many, many, many years. He and Bob were out there doing it all by themselves for the beginning, and God bless them all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. For our next presentation, let me call back Councilmember Weiss.
Come on, bring your family.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm joined here by Jim Lynch, the outgoing President of the Century City Chamber of Commerce, his wife Bev, and his daughters. Come on up, guys.
Annie and Patty.
Patty and Annie. And we're here to say goodbye to Jim, but in a small way, because he is going next door to the city of Beverly Hills, and I have every expectation that in the future, Jim and the folks in Beverly Hills are going to have an even closer relationship with the city of Los Angeles, with Century City, with the entire West Side than they've had before. And the reason I'm confident about that is because I've had the chance to get to know Jim extraordinarily well over these past three years, as has my chief field deputy, Susan Burks, who's over here, who I know is going to miss Jim tremendously. It has been an absolute pleasure partnering with Jim on all of the difficult issues which we've had together, because Century City is, it's one of the commercial hubs of our city, if not our entire region. In fact, I'm sure you could come up with a list of states in the United States of America on more than one hand that have a GDP smaller than that of Century City. And in fact, that would be an interesting, I know you're gone now, but that would have been an interesting stat. And the fact of the matter is that running Century City and running it well is a very, very big job, and Jim did it very capably. He served as President and CEO of the Century City Chamber since 1999, but he has extensive experience in the Chamber of Commerce field going back nearly three decades. And he has focused in that area as what he has done in his career, and what he has done has been elevate the traditional notion of a Chamber of Commerce from being what it can be at its base, which is a meet-and-greet networking opportunity, to really something else, to an organization that participates in all of the important decisions, whether it's land use, planning, public safety, in an area, and which involves the entire community, residents, not just business owners, but employees, building owners, labor, bringing all the parties together to try to create a more vibrant community. As Jim leaves Century City, he leaves with part of his legacy being of the incredible makeovers that are going on in the Century City area right now, the new MGM Tower, the new building that will be known as the CAA Building, and the makeover of Santa Monica Boulevard. Jim, we will miss you, but we are very, very glad that you will be truly a stone's throw away, not that we're planning on throwing any stones into your new city, but we really want to wish you the very best, and thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Well, thank you, Councilman Weiss. It's been a true delight working with you and your staff since you've come to office. Some of your other colleagues on the Council, I've had the opportunity to work with and enjoyed that a great deal. You've done a lot to include business in all of your decisions throughout your time, and I really admire you for that. That is sometimes a rare quality that elected officials tend to leave out, but you've always been very inclusive, and this is a huge honor for me. I'm very grateful to you and to all of your colleagues today, and on behalf of my family and myself, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Good morning, colleagues and members of the public, both here and watching at home. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the following organizations for a very special announcement and a very special occasion. You've seen the gentleman here to my left here a couple of times, as we've recognized Officer Mike Scott and the Centurions, the Los Angeles Police Department baseball team. But what we have upon us, what will take place tomorrow, is the Fourth Annual Swing-a-thon. It's an annual event that has become the hottest new tradition out in the northeast San Fernando Valley, a charity baseball game that raises money for charitable causes, and this year will lead towards at least 2,500 gifts to be distributed during the holiday season. And so we commend the Centurions baseball team for their volunteerism, for their giving up their time, their energy for a great cause. But this year's announcement is extra special in the sense that we have some very special guests, some honored guests, visiting the city of Los Angeles for tomorrow's game. About a month ago, some of the members of this council, and say, more than about 100,000 people from throughout Los Angeles, went to Dodger Stadium and saw one of the greatest rivalries and traditions in Major League Baseball when the Los Angeles Dodgers played the New York Yankees in a three-game series. Tomorrow, the tradition continues. The Los Angeles Police Department baseball team will be hosting and playing against the New York Police Department baseball team. They're in town for this very special occasion. Let's give them a round of applause. NYPD. We've prayed for them, we've shared with them, we've laughed with them, we've expressed our sympathies with them for what New York has been through for the last several years, and I think it's just a wonderful testament to their commitment to public service, to be willing to take time off, because I do believe they're here on their own time, and out of their own pockets in some cases, to travel across the country and join with and against all the field only, they're brothers and sisters in uniform on a baseball field for a charitable cause to benefit the children of Los Angeles. I want to bring forward at this time Officer Mike Scott to receive this certificate of appreciation on behalf of the LAPD Centurions baseball team. He can maybe chat with us a little bit more about tomorrow's event and introduce your counterpart from New York.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I just wanted to pay my respects and acknowledgement of the fine members of the LAPD. I see some very, very familiar faces in that crowd. Lieutenant, all the years that I spent there, all the wonderful work you folks do every single day, and the people need to understand that you're out there on the streets every single day, keeping the city safe, and in the spare time, which spare time you have, you devote to something to keep you in good physical condition and to keep that image of Los Angeles high on that marquee. So I want to personally congratulate you, I'm going to be there tomorrow, you got an event tomorrow, I will be there, I know many of my colleagues will be there, we're behind you, we support you, and God bless the LAPD. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also want to rise and say thank you for what you do, in the sense that not only baseball, but what we lose sight of for both football and baseball is you fund underprivileged children programs, and that's the whole purpose of being out there to play ball. And for those who've not seen them play, they play real baseball. I mean, it's just not a situation where they go out and throw the ball around, just like the Centurions in football, play real football, and they compete against New York and all of these other police department teams. It brings together 3,000 miles away law enforcement brothers and sisters, and it provides a great service. Plus, I think the added benefit of staying in shape impacts positively on your job performance. So keep up the good work. I've seen you out there playing, and just let us know, we can help you in other issues. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I was fortunate to represent Silmar at one time in another venue, now Silmar is represented by Councilmember Padilla. But when I was in the state legislature, I was so happy that you contacted my office and we were able to be supportive year after year. I just want to make a commitment before you and the people of Los Angeles, I'm going to remain committed and continue to help in any way that I can. You're doing a wonderful, wonderful thing, and it's just great to see what you're doing, as was mentioned earlier. The time that you have is scarce, but you continue to give, give, give in many, many ways, and I just want to say thank you for doing that, and congratulations and good luck tomorrow.
Mr. Laban.
Hey, Cindy. Mr. President and everyone, it's great to see, it's great to see the New York Police Department here. And let's give the New York Police Department a great hand for all they've been through, for all the years. I love New York, but I've never seen so many good-looking New Yorkers dressed in a suit like that. So you represent your city well, and you're next to the greatest police department in the world, the LAPD. I say that because Tommy Lasorda says that, because when Tommy was a manager with the Dodgers, he would repeat the story. He'd come into Shea Stadium and he'd walk up, and there would be one of your fellow officers, and he'd say, “It's great to see the NYPD,” with all enthusiasm. So it's great to see all of you here. Baseball's a great sport, what Councilman Parks said is so true. I coached the LAPD Centurion football team for seven years, and they raised a lot of money for the blind children that are here in Los Angeles, and made a great impact on others. So this is another program, and the field is a beautiful field. It's a beautiful field. I wish I could play on that field. I went out last year, I know the Raiders came out last year, I know Cliff Branch of the Raiders is coming out again this year. So if you see Cliff Branch, tell him hello. He's quite a receiver. And also Rod Martin is a great man who's coming out too. But have a lot of fun, and I hope you go to the tower of this city hall before you leave this morning here, because the tower is that great badge of the LAPD which shows this great city and what this people believe in, and public safety and all you do is so important. But I'm glad to have you in Los Angeles. Have a great time in this great city of angels, and good luck to New York, good luck to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, second time.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I didn't want to pay disrespect to New York. I was back there doing some photographs from the previous presentation, I thought you were all LAPD. And I didn't hear the fact that New York PD is here. I want to acknowledge NYPD and the wonderful work you do. I didn't want to slide you folks some NYPD. How many folks in NYPD? Can I see you show a hand?
Twenty-six.
Okay, great. The team's there, God bless you. Thank you, folks, for being here. One thing I learned, and I spent 35 years in LAPD, is no matter where you're from, you're blue, and that's what it's all about. So thank you, NYPD, thank you, LAPD, thank you all. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Vierigosa.
Well, of course, representing the great city of Los Angeles, as we all do, we all acknowledge our officers to be the finest anywhere in the world, but let me tell you, all of us watched with a great deal of pride when your officers at the NYPD were there protecting America on that infamous day of September 11th, and we thank you for your courage, we thank you for what you did, not only for the people of New York, but for this great country, and we know this is going to be a great battle royal, and, you know, I know where my sentiments are, but we love you both.
I'd like to thank you, Council President Alex Padilla, members of the City Council. What can I say? New York is here, it's in LA. I'm going to tell you a little bit of history about New York PD and LAPD. This is our third matchup with New York. New York was out in San Diego last year, we played them in the championship game out of 14 baseball teams, law enforcement baseball team, we both made it to the championship. We beat New York, nine to two. Just last month, we went to New York and played them in a tournament, very close game, New York beat us, seven to six, in the final inning of the game. So ladies and gentlemen, this is the showdown of all showdowns, right here in Los Angeles. New York has made the trip over here, and this is the matchup of all matchups. I mean, this is big as it gets. New York has 26 sworn officers, we have 25, and we play competitive baseball. We're two of the top teams in the United States, guaranteed, and we're going to match up tomorrow in one of the biggest showdowns in town. So I need you guys to spread the word about that. I just wanted to get that out, first of all, we're honored to have those gentlemen here today. And in a moment, I'll bring up their president to receive this award. Now, with that, bringing out New York, there's a reason for us doing that, not just because of the matchup between us and New York, that's a great catch for the kids to come out, but we're doing this for a reason. It's basically to give back to our kids in our community. The game itself is just the end part of what we're doing at this Swing-a-thon event. This is actually our fourth year doing the event. I think we started off four years ago with about 300 people, we tripled, and we tripled that. Last year, we had about 1,500 people come out. This year, we're guaranteed to have over 4,000 people up there. The biggest part is about that. We invite youth organizations from all over the city. Right now, I have a list of 40 youth organizations that are coming from Harbor City, Altadena, Venice, Los Angeles, Pacoima. It's over 900 kids that will be there in the morning before the event even opens to the public. We're going to be doing youth challenges for them for prizes during this event. Also, the, the baseball clinic, there's a free baseball clinic given by the starting Dodgers. Manny Mota is supposed to be there, or Dallas Perez. Jose Lima is supposed to show up, but I'm not sure about that because of his, his thing at Dodger Stadium. Also, the football clinic, free football clinic being given by Rod Martin, Charles White, and Anthony Davis. Ladies and gentlemen, our public safety vehicles are there, interactive games, free digital fingerprinting for the kids. I, I ask kids every year after the event, and I, I love to speak to the kids and ask them, and ask them how they feel about the event that we put on. And they tell it, they tell me how they felt. Most of the time, they say, "There's nothing else we could have done." And I, I take that to heart, to kids really enjoy themselves when they come out and, and see our events. And what it does for us is a chance for the police, not only the police department, but the elected officials and the celebrities to interact with the kids. If we invest in our kids now, we're talking about the gang problems that we're having, this is the best investment we could do right here. These kids will remember this and what we did for them. So that's the best thing we can do right here is come together. And I, if, if any of you guys have not made a plan to be there tomorrow, please come tomorrow and see what we can do for the community. And that's through our police department, our LAPD Centurion baseball team. I would like to bring forward the president of the New York Finest baseball team. We're excited to have these guys here. I mean, just real briefly, they, New York came in, New York came in yesterday. We, we're playing, playing host to New York. We sent them to Universal Studios yesterday. Okay, today, we're going to a Dodger game tonight. We're on, we're on the field level, and they're supposed to put it up on the screen. And tomorrow, we're hosting the event. So we're, we're taking care of these New York guys. That's brought to you by some of our sponsors, the Chafet family and Edward Marino, that are helping us and all you city councilmen. So we're, we're really hosting these guys out here and taking care of them. I'd like to bring up right now the president of the New York Finest Police Department, Mr. Jose Vasquez.
Not too great with public speaking. We don't speak much in New York, believe it or not. I just, yeah. I'd just like, on behalf of the New York City Police Department, New York's finest baseball club, I'd like to thank Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Police Department and the city council for having us here in LA. I met Mike last year in September, like he said, at the tournament in San Diego. And when he showed up, he must have had this planned now for a couple of years. Soon as we got there, he pulled us to the side. He said, "Listen, you guys have to come to, to LA next year." He mentioned what it was all about. We decided last year in September that we were going to be here. They've been a great host. The city's been great. We've only been here one night, pretty late. But it's been great. We appreciate the hospitality. It's going to be a great event tomorrow. And like he said, it's going to be a showdown. It's game, game three. He failed to say, by the way, that we won the tournament in New York. It's going to be a great event, and you know what? It's, it's like our motto says. We have a motto on our police department baseball team, and it goes, "We're here to promote goodwill, play ball, protect, and play ball." And that's actually, and that's exactly what we're here to do. We're here to promote goodwill, and that's what we're all about. You know, people see us out in the street, they see us in one way. When we get on the baseball field, it's a, it's a totally different ballgame. So we appreciate it. And like I said, we appreciate your hospitality, and we just bring a little gift for the city councilmen here.
All right, thank you. I might not be wearing this tomorrow, but I think I can wear it on Sunday. And for gentlemen who are here from New York, I just want you to know that, I know this council chamber is a little bit different than the New York City council chambers. I've had a chance to visit there a couple of times. And I happened in touch with your president of the city council, Speaker Miller. And so he wanted to come out here. He's got family commitments and a Democratic convention to get ready to, so he wasn't able to come out here. But he supports you guys 100 percent, wanted me to say hello to all of you on his behalf.
Thank you. Just real briefly, I'd like to thank all the New York police officers and our own police officers and let you guys know, when we do our things, when we travel, when we come here out to these events, we do not get paid. This is in our own time. And I'd like to thank each and every one of our, our team members and give them a round of applause for giving all their time, first of all. We also like to present Alex Padilla, and we also have for each councilman and councilwoman commemorative baseball. These were donated by Diamond Sports, and they read, "East Meets the West, LAPD versus NYPD." And we got one of these for each of one of you guys. We thank you guys for your support. And we'd like to let you guys know that we're going to continue to do the things we do. And if you guys continue to support us and give us what we need, we'll continue to give to the kids as much as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Council President Padilla. Our next presentation will be Mr. Cardenas. But let's take a moment to perhaps run through the role and quickly dispense with the items that are not like...
If I may, Madam Chair, just quickly, before we get to the next presentation, there's another group, it's a group of fourth grade students who are here from my district that I'd like to just briefly introduce. They're here on a tour of City Hall, but Mary Barrientos is their leader here and their guide today. Wanted to point them out just briefly because a lot is said about crime prevention, as we just heard from some of the police officers, and what we can do to keep our kids out of trouble and in positive activities. And the cause that Ms. Barrientos has chosen to take on with these fourth graders is, let's not just tell them, "Don't do this, don't do that, don't get into drugs, don't get into gangs," but let's give them something positive to look forward to. And whatever you decide to do, whether it's art, whether it's music, whether it's anything else, it's important to do it with class and to show that dignified behavior. And so she's taken groups of fourth graders from Pacoima, one of the, let's say, not best of all communities in the city, and is taking them through etiquette training. And as part of their etiquette training, they're not only learning that proper conduct, but they're here on the tour of City Hall. So I just briefly and quickly wanted to recognize Mary and the group that she's leading through City Hall today, along with Teresa de la Paz and Consuela Telfair, who are her right and left hand in this program.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment, Councilman Padilla, and also acknowledge we have a group of young people from District One with the Mead Housing. We also have with us Antonio Fletes, Richard Cruz, Hector Figueroa, Victoria Lau, Flor Moya, Aracelia Del Campo, Linda Nguyen, Larry Laura, Clinton, Hung King, Richard Morales Tang, and Jan Garcia. I want to thank you guys for being here. Raise your hands if I called your name, and thank you all for joining, and thank Mary for all her great work in City One. Thank you so much.
Do you say "thank you" while you're taking a class?
Thank you.
I would like to say a few words to the council. Myself and Ms. Barrientos, who's a former commissioner of Housing Authority City of Los Angeles, started this pilot program in San Fernando Gardens, one of the housing projects in the San Fernando Valley, over a year ago. And it went so well that was expanded to other projects within the Housing Authority. We are now in William Mead and also in...
Mar Vista.
Mar Vista Gardens. We also have some students from William Mead and Mar Vista Gardens here today. We've also done work in Ramona Gardens. It's been an amazing program, and the most amazing thing about it is these children want to be here, not because anyone's forcing them to be here, but they want to take the program so they can learn basic things about etiquette and how to learn certain things that they may not be learning in schools, such as how to fill out a job application before they even have to have the need to do one. And thank you all for your support. I'd also want to make one acknowledgment of Ms. Ozzy Gonzak, who was former chairperson of the Housing Authority for over 14 years. Without her help, we would have not been able to get this program off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vierigosa, did you want to...
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge this program and its success. Where are the young people from Ramona Gardens? Anybody from Ramona Gardens here?
They're working on our new program, Earn and Learn.
Well, I want to congratulate you. This is an important initiative and program. To Mary Barrientos, my dear friend, thank you for caring enough about these young children to make a difference.
And we have one student here, Jenny Angeles. She's, how old are you now? 12? 11 years old. And she's developed quite a talent for art. She'd like to present a drawing of hers to Mr. Padilla, possibly for his children's museum.
I would like to give this to Ms. Padilla, the councilman.
Can I put this up in my office?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. The city clerk indicated that it will take a while to run through the agenda because of some, we have to go through items individually. So at this time, we will continue with presentations and...
They wanted to say "thank you." Say "thank you." As you leave, say "thank you."
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next presentation will be Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Now I'd like to bring forward Carmen Castillo, Carmen and her family, her supporters. For 24 years, Carmen Castillo has heard men and women say to her, "Carmen, can you help me get a job? I want to work." And that is given to her not as a question, but as a statement. "I want to work." And Carmen has been working very hard at EDD for over 34 years. And that was when EDD had a recruitment program out of kindergarten. That's right, a pilot program, and they recruited you out of kindergarten, and you spent 34 years with EDD. Carmen worked her way up from being a clerk to a counselor and a job agent. In August of 1980, Carmen took on the responsibility of the Ex-Offender Job Agent Program, which you could probably imagine not too many people had the heart or the will or the willingness to take on that responsibility, but Carmen did. So for 24 years, she has served as the only job agent in Pacoima, in the Pacoima office, dealing solely with finding jobs for ex-falons. Carmen, it was a few years ago that we worked very hard to build you a brand-new building in Pacoima, and we built that building, and we were successful doing that. I made the mistake of a politician of making it happen and not putting a clause in there saying, "You got to keep Carmen forever as long as we build you this building." But unfortunately, Carmen is a victim, not that Carmen likes to think of herself as a victim, but I'll say that Carmen is a victim. She's leaving her job not by choice, but she's a victim of the budget cutbacks in Sacramento. So she's leaving her job based on the budget cuts. If it were her ability, she would stay there for many, many years to come. And with that, I'd like to say that Carmen has the support of her family, and I'll name a few. Carmen is the resident of San Fernando. She attended Valley College, transferred to Cal State University Northridge. She has four children, two boys and two girls, which she raised on her own for majority of their lives. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to thank you for your service and best of luck in your, I'm not going to call it retirement, because we're going to figure out some ways to use your talent out there in the valley. With that, is Council President Padilla available? He wanted to be a part of this presentation.
I believe he's in the back with pictures.
Okay, when he gets back from taking pictures with the police officers from New York, we'll include him as well. So with that, I'd like to invite Carmen Castillo to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you, city council. Honored and privileged to be here this morning and to be honored in this way for a job that I was not only paid to do, but which I loved. And as Mr. Cardenas stated, I am very sad to have leave, to have, leaving my job and to leave all those persons that I've helped and I hoped to help, but I hope to continue in some way to find employment somewhere else, you know, helping my community and that special group of people that I was so privileged to help, have helped all these years. It was, I, I like to say that it was not just a job, but a calling and a vocation to me. And my children can attest to that, you know, because I took it to heart. Each and every person that came, you know, through my office was a special person. And I am sorry to leave the position, but I thank the state for the 34 years that I was able to work for them. And again, thank you for the privilege of being here and for the award. I think my granddaughters wanted to say something.
Yes, please come forward.
Hi. I'd just like to say on behalf of our family, thank you for acknowledging our grandmother's accomplishments and for her hard work and dedication to the community. Thanks.
Good morning. Our family is very proud of our grandmother. We hope that others can follow in her footsteps and be very dedicated to their communities and help them out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And for someone who dedicates 34 years of their life above and beyond the call of duty, we want to give a special thanks to the family of Carmen Castillo for putting up with so many hours and so much dedication that she gives at their expense, but something, as you can see, that's well appreciated and put in the right perspective. And with that, I'd like to give this certificate of recognition to Carmen Castillo. And let me point something out. I never give these out unless they're framed. We had a little snafu, but you will get your certificate framed for you, and we will give this to you, Carmen, in its proper fashion and form beyond today. And in addition to that, I want, once again, thank you and congratulate you for all the wonderful, wonderful years of service and dedication, not only from your time, but from your heart. So congratulations, and hopefully the state of California will learn from this mistake of cutting out this program, and they will reinstate it very, very soon. So on behalf of the community and the city of Los Angeles, we commend you, Carmen, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. For our next recognition, let me call on Councilmember Parks.
Today, I have with me a true local hero for the Eighth District, Dr. Joseph Mills. And he's accompanied by his mother, Mildred Lehman. The reason that we have Mr. Mills here is that he has been a longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles, a former resident of the South Los Angeles Eighth District. He attended elementary, junior high school, and high school in the Eighth District. He was raised by a single mom who instilled in him, along with his brother and sister, the importance of education and hard work. I just want to give you an overview of how he took education to heart. He received his bachelor's degree in engineering, a master's in engineering, a doctorate in nuclear engineering from the University of California, Los Angeles, and he was also, at the same time, very active in fraternities. He participated in sports, youth recreation centers at some of our Eighth District parks, Van Ness Playground, Harvard Park, where engaged in a variety of sports activities. He's a 30-year veteran in the field of space exploration and is internationally recognized nuclear engineer. He is the vice president and program manager of Boeing Company Jupiter Icy Moon Orbiter Effort, which is searching for signs of life on three moons of Jupiter... Now you're going to have to help me on this. Jupiter, Callisto, Europa, and Ganymede. Whatever that means, Doctor. The Jupiter Icy Moon Orbiter could be the first space mission in NASA's history, which would be the nuclear fission-powered exploration. He's also a former head of the Boeing Company International Space Station, an orbiting space laboratory of which he led the multi-million dollar, multi-billion dollar contract to design, develop, and test, and launch, and operate. He's received such awards as the Pioneer Award in 2004 for Black Engineers of the Year Award, the Rotary, NASA's Stella Award for Late Career Achievement 2003. He is a 2002 recipient of Aviation Week's Laureate of the Year Award. He shares his life with his... He shares his life with his, with Gail, his wife, for more than 20 years, and they have four children. We brought him here because of the example that he set in the educational field. It goes hand in hand that just very shortly, the City of LA will open his first science magnet in the 8th District in Exposition Park, and we wanted to honor him because of these achievements to reflect to our youth in our community that you can start at Van Ness Playground and end up as a nuclear engineer and scientist. And I'd like to present Dr. Mills with this certificate and say thank you so much for what you've done as a role model and what you've done for the country and the space science, because you've been a remarkable person that started with very humble beginnings, but certainly has made an impact on the entire nation and world. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to thank the City Council, Congressman Parks, Councilman Parks, and special thanks to his Special Projects Deputy, Joey Williams, who saw an article in Ebony Magazine and took the initiative to start this process. I'm honored and I'm privileged to be recognized here today. This is the city I was born in, city I was raised in, city I've lived essentially all my adult life in. And it's really just, I'm overwhelmed by the, by the event today. And, you know, throughout my life, I've been influenced by a lot of folks that have allowed me to experience what I think is a full and rewarding career. But clearly, the most influential person in my life has been my mom here. And, I mean, early on, as Councilman Parks said, she imparted a set of core values to me that included appreciating the value of education and the importance of performing well in school. And I, I built on that foundation with some God-given talents in math and science. It got me through a few college degrees and launched a professional career. I feel like I'm truly blessed. My wife couldn't be here today, and, and I've got four wonderful children and four fantastic grandchildren, and, and I just thank you for this, for what is overwhelming. Thank you again.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Parks. Our next presenter will be Councilmember Ed Reyes.
I want to first thank all our guests who've been in the chambers for their patience. This is Ceremony Day. I usually tell folks and invite them, be ready for a nice break between 10:00 AM to 12:00, and hopefully, we'll get you out before 12:00 o'clock. But members, I have three presentations, and they're very special. And at first, I'd like to call up Hector Sandoval, his lovely wife Gina, his daughters Melody and Kimberly, and his brother Gabriel. Yeah, you're part of the family. You know, I've known Hector, I guess, maybe 15 years, más o menos. He grew up and lives in Cypress Park. He was a part of a company back then where they make wrought iron. We won, we, we were in the process of developing a tailor yard. He worked with us and hired a lot of local young people to work on this wrought iron fence. And I went to go visit him and talk about how the project was going. I find out he's into film. He's into art. He's got this incredible studio. And so it's with great, great excitement and pride that I invited him and his family. Gina, then, they were all preparing their house, and things were just evolving. So fast forward 15 years, he's at this other level now, and that is, he's producing movies, making movies. And tomorrow, on July 24th, there's a documentary entitled Corte Vision, which celebrates, celebrates the life of Cuban photographer Alberto Díaz Gorda. They'll be making the world premiere at the Egyptian Theater in Hollywood during the Latino International Film Festival. Corte Vision is a portrayal into a 40-year journey of one man's photographic career, tracing Alberto Díaz's life from La Habana, Cuba, throughout and throughout the world. Because of his work, Díaz could, would become Cuba's greatest photographer. He created the photographic style of Cuban advertising and fashion in the late 50s and captured the heroic personalities of the revolution while becoming Fidel Castro's personal photographer from 1959 through 1968. But one of Díaz's most widely renowned photographs occurred on March 5th, 1960, when he unknowingly immortalized Che Guevara in a pivotal photo that has to become one of the most recognized images of the 20th century, but also the most produced photographic, in the photographic history. So every time you see a youngster with a Che picture on a T-shirt, on a poster, you see Che everywhere, that's the shot we're talking about. From the courtrooms of London to the streets of La Habana and the corridors of Washington City, historical, historical photos have made an indelible and valuable contribution to the modern world of popular images. So now, after a four-year effort, Hector Sandoval is bringing this story to the screen in the original insightful documentary. So I'd like to invite all of you and those of you who are listening to this great event. You'll learn a lot about the Latino culture, Latino history, but I most of all want to thank Hector, one of the guys in Cypress Park, who was able to rise to the ranks, make a profound impression in the business world, and establish this threshold of now becoming a producer and immortalizing and on film much of our history and our culture. And you should see his work, his graphic work, as a graphic artist, is amazing. He has a great one of the Lollas de Rio from a past event. And I just want to thank him for all his hard work and invite him to the podium. Hector.
Again, my name is Hector Cruz Sandoval. I'm a producer and director, and I thank all you council members for this very honorable day for myself and for my family. And I want to particularly thank Ed Reyes. We go back a long, long time. And being a producer and director in the documentary world is hard work, because when you take on that responsibility, it's an allegiance to the truth. And in this particular case, it's about subject matter, about art, art that represents part of Cuba's history. And my objective between this film was to open up maybe some dialogue using art between Cuba and the United States. So hopefully, using art in this project and in future projects, we can kind of create some kind of dialogue that can open up the doors for both countries. I'd like to thank you once again. It's been a great honor. I invite you all tomorrow to the festival. The filming premiere is at 3:00 o'clock at the Egyptian Theater. Thank you very much.
Okay. He's been, Rebecca? Rebecca, you have a certificate? There's a whole production that occurred some time ago about Chavez Ravine. And in that process, we've learned about a community group that has essentially survived the displacement of many residents, and they are identified as Los Desterados. Well, the gentleman today with me, I'd like to invite up Johnny Alonso and his wonderful wife, Carol. Come on up. Hey, Johnny? Johnny is one of those rare persons who is a self-taught musician, who began playing his music at the years, since he was 10 years old. He was born in County General Hospital, and he spent his life in the City of Los Angeles. He grew up in Chinatown, in the Chinatown area, attended Castalar Elementary School. He went to Virgil Junior High, went to Belmont, where he started his band, Johnny Alonso and the Playboys. He recently played for the Desterados at the 25th Annual Picnic and was introduced to me as the Pope of East LA Music. The Desterados, I was saying before, is a group of community folks who survived that displacement, still gather with much pride, share many memories of their days in Chavez Ravine, and continue to gather in Elision Park annually. He's joined by his lovely wife, Carol, Johnny Alonso Jr. They have four other children, but they could not be here today. And he has many of his admirers here with us. So I want to thank them for being here and thank Mr. Santillan for his leadership. He's been a very strong supporter of preserving our memory of Chavez Ravine. So with this, I'd like to present to you Johnny Alonso for your hard work and your great talent. Thank you, Johnny.
Can you declare today Johnny Alonso Day for the East Side?
And I'd like, by popular demand by Mr. Santillan, declare today Johnny Alonso Day for the East Side. Thank you very much.
Can we remove those visitor passes, please, for our pictures? They'll look a lot better.
Well, I just want to thank the City Council and Mr. Luis Santillan for getting this together. Thank you very much. And now, keep going. Thank you, Johnny. Thank you, sir. Okay, come on. All right. We're trying to get coordinated here. Next is a very important presentation. They're all very important, but this one in particular speaks to how the Civiti family works together. And I'd like to call up Mercedes Márquez, who's just here, but I'd like to call up, what I like to call the 729 South Union team. So come on up, folks. And if Rocky Delgado or Cecilia Solano is in the house, I'd love to invite them, too. Folks, what I'm presenting to you today is a very special presentation in that we were able to put together an inter-agency housing task force. And this task force goes after those buildings that essentially are the oldest and usually found in the poorest neighborhoods, and almost a little bit more than half, believe it or not, are in my district. But what has happened is that between the council office, the city attorney, the mayor's office, and all the departments that are presented today, they were to put together a delicate balance and essentially promote a strategy that allows us to go after some of the most ruthless and scrupulous landlords. And today, I am pleased to honor and counsel a wonderful team of the city's many unsung heroes. And today, we have with us not only the Director of Housing, Mercedes Márquez, but part of the, yes, there's a round of applause, our City Attorney's Office, Victor Sofolcanek, Michael Duran, Alma Martinez, there with the City Attorney's Office. We have the Housing Department Code Enforcement, Ken Simmons, Domingo Salceda, Scott Miguel, John Tompkins, Martha Owana. Department of Building and Safety, David Keim, Bradley Neighbors, Jim Bowler, Dennis Hawks, Richard Macabio, Carl Strud. From the Fire Department, Inspector Dennis Hogard, Bogard, I'm sorry, and County Department of Health Services, Inspector Frank McEntree. Our Housing Department City Attorneys, Craig Takanaka, Susan Spillane, Jerome Duncan. From the Department Restabilization of the Housing Department, Agnes Long Tam. The LA DWP City Attorney and Account Customer Service Division, Susan Lopez, Lonnie Sliger, and Johnny Collins. And the CLA's Paul Smith. And the front lines in CD1 Office, who tirelessly fielded all the many frantic phone calls from 729 South Union, Sonia Jimenez, Angie de la Trinidad, Ricardo Renteria, Armila Arguin Flores, and of course, Sharon Low, who was probably the magnet that was pulling everything together. Please bear with me, because I know it's had a long morning, but this is important because it describes what we go through in the city. And this is an incredible story. We had a landlord, and I believe I can mention her name, Sandra O'Neil, the owner of 729 South Union. She has been one of the city's worst slum lords. What had been occurring is that she was confined to the very building that she was charged for neglecting. What had happened is that we thought that would be something that would motivate someone to change their ways. Instead, it became a living hell for the tenants. Because what ended up happening is that the tenants had to endure conditions that were just incredible. There were open pits with rats in them. There were increased harassment because she had brought over what the tenants called the overgrown goons. She forced the tenants to go to the basement to attend her own ministry in the basement of the building. She forced the tenants to essentially tolerate the illegal drug activities. She tampered with their mail, and this is going on and on and on. What was amazing is that she continued to collect rent, but failed to pay the water bill, failed to pay the electric bill, and essentially did nothing to improve the buildings and still demanded her rent. On top of that, she got to the point where she owed Department of Water and Power nearly $80,000. It all came to a climax in April and May of this year. A head-on collision came on when Department of Water and Power and the gas company said, "Look, we have to shut everything down. This person's not paying." What would have happened is all of these tenants, over 100 families, would have become homeless. Instead, what happened is that DWP, the gas company, all got together and put together an incredible strategy where we were able to save 130 families from being thrown in the street that would have triggered over $750,000 of relocation assistance. Now, this great teamwork and quick thinking of two of our city attorneys in the Housing Department, DWP, resulted in a sharp reprieve with another partial payment by O'Neil. Our office immediately convened a meeting. The 729 South Union team got together, the people that are with us, which I think reflects some of the city's best when the backs are up against the wall. They refused to blink. An emergency backup plan was put into place with Building and Safety, Housing Department, CLA, and City Attorney's Office. The team took on O'Neil and played hardball poker with some pretty tough, hard-nail players for the city at the table. Our two city attorneys in the Housing Department, DWP, took the lead, and they just happened to be some pretty tough women. To top this off, the building was posted the next day with a shut-off notice from the gas company. There was no turning back. The strategy was put into play. Our city attorneys with four DWP Housing and Inter-Agency Housing Task Force pushed forward on all fronts simultaneously. Department of Water and Power Collection, the Housing Department leveraged the threat of a health and safety receivership and monitoring the building, lenders' collection actions to obtain a rent-on-profits receivership. The task force's criminal prosecution moved forward on O'Neil's probation violations. As a result, the great team, along with Lady Luck, was able to essentially outmaneuver and outbluff O'Neil and her attorneys and achieve the wonderful success for the city, for the residents of 729 South Union, and the entire neighborhood. 729 Union is placed under rent-and-profits receivership by the court. Our city attorneys were able to get the order of no utility shut-offs in the court order. O'Neil's other building, CD1, was placed under the same receivership. Ms. O'Neil was also in a criminal prosecution for 1021 Parkview. Both 729 South Union and 1021 Parkview have been stabilized. Over 100 families are no longer under threat of losing their home or suffering under the hands of Ms. O'Neil. The receiver immediately took possession of the building, conducted an assessment. They've taken on the repairs of the building. As a result of O'Neil's repeated violations and her probation, Michael Duran and the IHTF City Attorney was able to sentence her to 45 days of Caltrans duty. City Attorney was able to sentence her to 45 days of Caltrans duty. So it'll be a long, hot summer cleaning up the freeways for Sandra O'Neil. Now, you should know that this is the same facility that came out in the news where they showed the baby who had rat bites on her ears and face. This is the same tenants who were out in front of their building, who were crying because they didn't want to go back, but had no other choice because they had nowhere else to live. So I'd like to acknowledge this team, because this is what happens in the trenches. I mean, us as elected officials are here in this air-conditioned room, we're going through our lobbying, our policy discussion, our debates, but these are the people that are there working for our community on a day-in, a day-out basis, on hot summer days, long cold nights. So they're the ones that I just want to acknowledge and give them their moment in the sun. I'd like to ask Susan Spillane to join me to say a few words on behalf of the team for her hard work and nonstop diligence resulting in the receivership order, including protective language of no utility shut-offs. And then I'd like to ask Mercedes and Cecilia Estalano on behalf of the City Attorney's Office.
Before we hear from them, let me ask Mr. Ludlow to say a few words. Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and say a couple of things. First and foremost, for everybody that's sort of mingling around, today is one of those Fridays where I know everybody's anxious to get home. There's so much chatter in the chambers this morning. If the Sergeant-at-Arms could try to maybe ask people to hold it down just a little bit. What Mr. Reyes has just been presenting to us, colleagues, is the example of what city government ought to be doing. I mean, this is where you actually see taxpayers' dollars at work, fighting for the least amongst us. And hearing about a little girl with rat bites on her face, knowing that a landlord had the greed, the inhumanity to try to allow those kind of conditions to exist for such a long period of time. And this team here, which never gets out in front of the limelight, this is not the team that you see in front of the cameras every day. I first want to say, Mr. Reyes, thank you for having the concept to actually bring this team together and bring them here today before the entire City Council to acknowledge the work that you guys have been doing. We applaud you, we thank you. And then secondly, to those listeners who are watching this on television throughout the city, we may not resolve every issue all the time, but let me tell you, this is a case, this is an example of where man's inhumanity to man is most egregious. And to see what you as city employees have done to turn these lives around for these families and give them an opportunity to live with dignity is something that I hope forever you really feel very, very good about because you've really made us all proud. Councilmember Reyes, thank you for bringing this delegation in, and all of you. We respect you, we are so honored that you did such a great job and helped turn these families' lives around. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reyes. I'm sure we've all heard in the news this morning that government is widely perceived as not communicating within itself and to the detriment of its citizens. I'm pleased to report that due to the leadership of Councilwoman Reyes, and due to having some great bosses like Craig Takanaka and Cecilia Estalano, and City Attorney Delgado, and having some great clients like the Housing Department and Building and Safety, and I'm pleased to report that that's not the case in Los Angeles. And I'm going to speak on behalf of everybody here when I say that we're looking forward, to the extent you can in this sort of situation, to continue to working together. We are looking forward to aggressively protecting the tenants and the residents of this city. We are looking forward to aggressively protecting the city's investments in its properties. And on behalf of the Criminal Section, I'm sure that they are looking forward to aggressively prosecuting more slum lords. Thank you for this.
Good morning. I'm Mercedes Márquez from the Housing Department. It's a wonderful thing when I know as the general manager that the folks in the Rent Division of the Housing Department worked with the folks in the Code Enforcement Section of the Housing Department, who worked with the folks in the Legal Section of the Housing Department, who worked with the folks in the Asset Management part of the Housing Department, so that all together they would bring every remedy that the Housing Department had to offer to work all of the evidence, so that we could then work together with our colleagues at Building and Safety, and at the City Attorney's Office, and always at our friend Councilwoman Reyes's office, to do the right thing. From my point of view, if we're speaking to each other like that without the general manager really asking them to do it, that means the Housing Department is working well, and I'm really grateful for that. So to my own folks, congratulations, and thank goodness for those families. And thank you, Councilwoman Reyes, for the acknowledgement. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Councilwoman Reyes for acknowledging this incredible team. I think he said it best, these are the folks who are in the trenches. We have folks represented from the Housing Department, Building and Safety, various divisions of the City Attorney's Office, the Criminal Division, the Department of Water and Power Council. We have our folks from the Housing Division of the City Attorney's Office. Communication is key, and aggressiveness is key. And I think with the new team at the Housing Department, we are seeing a forward-looking, aggressive approach to protecting tenants, protecting the city's investment, and we are so excited about working in partnership with this tremendous team. Thank you very much.
And closing, I know I acknowledged her name, but I want to thank Sharon Low, because she's been one of the strong men. Come on up, Sharon. And the team on CD1 for their hard work. It's amazing what you can learn when you talk about environmental justice. It's amazing what you can see when you have this type of spirit and will. And on behalf of the children, the families, the moms, those who are so desperate, you made them realize that someone is listening and someone does care, and I want to thank you again for all your hard work. We have certificates for you in the back, and I know we probably have a little bit, a few more presentations, so thank you very much for your patience.
Before you leave, we also want to hear from Mr. Villarigosa.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for bringing this great team of public servants together. You know, when you hear people lament and criticize even government, what they don't realize, especially here in the city of Los Angeles, how many great people who care, who want to make a difference. And I know two of them, I don't know, I know a number of you, but two of them that I especially want to acknowledge is Cecilia Estalano and Mercedes, who everybody has talked about. I know the kind of skills and the passion and the commitment to our community that they bring to everything that they do. And this team of people working together in the way that you have, as successfully as you have, really gives me hope that we can make a difference in this area, and most importantly, that we have the wherewithal to really say to those people who feel like government isn't there for them, that we care, we are going to fight for them, we're going to speak out for them, we're going to ensure that they have a place to live that's decent, and neighborhoods that are safe. So thank you so much for this incredible effort on your part.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mr. Ludlow?
One last comment. I just want to say this, we've got, one of the first times ever, we've got four networks in here today to cover Silly String. I hope the reporters that are here today take just two seconds to interview this team and talk about what they just did. You're here for Silly String, let's talk about humanity.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
There comes a time when someone serves this city so well that they deserve the honor of coming before the City Council and receiving a proclamation resolution, and Marilyn Laney is just that person. She began her city career over 33-years ago in October in 1970 as a clerk typist in our Personnel Department. She was promoted to a Special Commercial Service Representative with the Department of Water and Power. Why you ever left Water and Power? I bet your husband's going to ask you. She then was promoted to the Principal Clerk of our City Clerk's Office at our Tax and Permit Division in our Van Nuys Branch, and then also worked on various projects to enhance our ability to be fair as we collected taxes. She was commended by the City Clerk in 1992 for implementing special procedures which reduced the need for temporary workers, and more than 70% resulting in a great savings in the annual payroll expense system. Procedure changes made by Marilyn right here in her career resulted in meeting growing workloads on her very difficult deadlines, which simultaneously reduced the staffing for our various bureaus, but she kept doing her job, which is so important. She was driven to be a great public servant, and Marilyn certainly was that. She was awarded in 1993 the Career Service Award, which is given to very few city employees. Out of all 44,000 people who served the city of 4 million, she received such an honor, which is a credit to her dedication in service. Her leadership skills and knowledge and dedication during more than 33-years of service has helped this city of Los Angeles. So I wanted to, along with Councilmember Janice Hahn, salute Ms. Marilyn Laney for her work, and congratulate her for 33-years of great work, processing your unit over 100,000 claims a year to resolve tax issues. You've really done the work, because without the help of the people who pay the taxes, and without the people who supervise that, it doesn't work. So members, please salute Marilyn Laney for her 33-years of service. Please speak to us. Ms. Cristobal, the Head of Office of Finance, I want you to say a few words about this great employee. Excuse me, Antoinette. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason she left Department of Water and Power is because she wanted to come work for the Office of Finance, and she's done an outstanding job, and we're truly, truly going to miss Marilyn. As Councilwoman Labange said, Marilyn is a person, the supervisor who worked behind the scenes to process over 200,000-plus business tax renewals. And what's important about that is that she has to do it in a short period of time, and Marilyn has done an outstanding job. And I want to say on behalf of the Office of Finance, we are truly, truly going to miss her.
Marilyn, say a few words, and please introduce your family. Don't be shy. Good morning, or almost afternoon. I am in the process of trying to retire. I was just telling the young lady that was sitting next to us, I'm trying to retire if I can get out of here this morning. I had no idea that I was going to be here quite this long, and I probably have a parking ticket, so I'll just send that over to you.
You, I'll take it.
Oh, okay. I just want to just say that I am extremely honored this morning. I had no idea of having, having to, or expected to give words of any sort, but I am extremely pleased, I am extremely honored. I have done my best for the city of Los Angeles, and I am now ready to start a new chapter in my life. I want to also acknowledge two people who are extremely special to me. First of all, I want to thank my husband for tolerating my extended, long hours at work. He has put up with me to go through our renewals without too many complaints, so I just want to acknowledge him, my husband Jess Laney. And also, I would like to give special thanks to my daughter, Gayna, who has taken time off from work to be here with me this morning, and I also want to let her know that she is extremely special. Antoinette, and Joy, Ken, Phyllis.
All of them. There was many more people here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Marilyn, thank you. Let's give her another big hand for 33 great years of service to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you, Marilyn. Come on in, everybody, get in. Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And for our final presentation today, let me recognize Councilmember Smith.
You know, today seems to be like a baseball day. First, we had the LAPD and NYPD here, and in the back room, I think he's already left, but in case you didn't know, the new Vice President, Senior Vice President of the LA Dodgers, Howard Sunken, was here in the back a moment ago, if you hadn't heard of that. But we have with us today another championship team from my district, which I'm very proud to have here today. We were proud to bring you the Chatsworth National Champions last month, who won the national championship in baseball, and this team is the Northridge ASA Girls Softball 14-and-under Gold All-Star Team. This team is, this team has distinguished itself like the other teams from our area. They win and won six tournaments, the Thousand Oaks Tournament, the Camarillo Tournament, the Ventura Tournament, the Western District Tournament, Landora, and Downey tournaments. They placed in the state tournament, and now we're heading to the national tournament, representing the Northridge area and our city of LA. And so with a great record of 28-7, we want to recognize these great young ladies who are going to carry the banner for California into this championship national tournament. So the Northridge ASA All-Stars. We've already given them their certificates, but I do want to read their names, because these are young ladies who really distinguish themselves. And before I do, I think I want Janice Hahn to say her famous statement for the ladies. All right, Janice. Here today is Brianna Alas, Alex Bates, Emily Bliss, Brooke Carpenter, Krista Cobb, Mikey Fernandez, Katie Kirkpatrick, Catherine Kress, Giselle Morales, Brittany Myrick, Allison Namie, Diane Revago, and Jaclyn Russell. And of course, no team would be a team and a winning team without the great leadership of the coaches, in particular the manager. And with us today is Jacob Bliss, Javier Fernandez Sr., Barbara Myrick, Brent Carpenter, Luis Morales, Mark Bates, Doug Kirkpatrick, and a man who I've known for many years out at the Northridge Little Leagues, and has done such a great job in numerous teams, the coach of this winning team, this great championship team that's going to carry the banner for us, Richard Bliss. Richard, congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Say a few words for the Northridge folks.
Well, I didn't know I was going to have to talk today, but on behalf, pardon me, on behalf of the Northridge ASA Girls Softball 14-and-under Gold All-Star Team, we'd like to thank the City Council, we'd like to thank especially Councilman Smith here, who's been a big support of our league. As he said, the ladies here behind me, they've played tremendous, they've had an awesome summer. They'll be representing Northridge and the city of Los Angeles at the beginning of August when they play in the national championship tournament. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll be back here and be able to show you the trophy when we win the national championship. It's exciting times for our girls. Right now, they're, they have, like Greg said, we've won six tournaments, their record is 28-7. They're just doing fantastic. I'd like to thank you for the honor, for myself, for the girls, for my coaches, for the parents. We have a cohesive group of parents with good camaraderie, and that's what it takes is the support of the parents. We'd actually like to give Greg one of our Northridge All-Star pins, so he can, he can wear that the rest of the day on his lapel. There you go. And we're just very excited to be here, and we appreciate it. If any of you are in the Northridge area this weekend, we actually are hosting a tournament at our facility on Devonshire in Northridge. Our team plays on Saturday at 12 o'clock noon, and also at 6 o'clock in the evening. You can come by, root us on, come to our fundraiser booth, and help us out on our quest for the national title. Thank you all very much. Thanks again. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And colleagues, I think that concludes the presentation segment of today's agenda. Mr. Clerk, have we called the order yet?
No, we haven't.
Please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ledlow moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Miskowski moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds.
Do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's go through the agenda, dispense with consent items, and we will return to public comment as the first item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's been a request by Councilmember Reyes to continue items 31 and 34 to September 7.
Members requested to continue item 31 and 34 without objection. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 3 are street lighting maintenance assessment district items, notice for public hearing. Council should deny the protest and confirm the assessments.
Okay, members, items 1 through 3 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and public hearings are closed. Requests for specials on items 1, 2, or 3? 1, 2, and 3? Mr. Villagosa?
Is this on the special agenda?
No, items 1, 2, and 3 are the regular agenda. If there's no request for specials on these items, then, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 4 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 5. Findings and recommendations are required to grant or deny the application, and motion is required.
Okay, do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Item number 4, public hearing is open and closed. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I move to deny this without prejudice.
Okay, we have our motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll, and Mr. Weiss's motion, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 5 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 12. The recommendation is to deny the application without prejudice.
Okay, again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. We need a motion from Mr. Smith. I think he's in the back taking pictures. Let's hold this on the desk, please. Next item.
Item 6 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 15. The recommendation is to grant the application. A motion is required.
Okay, we do have cards on item 6 and 7 as well. Let's call those two items special to hear from members of the public. Next items, please.
Item 8 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 4. Findings and recommendations are required to grant or deny the application, and motion is required.
Members, item number 8 now before us, and I believe this is a matter in Council District 5. Again...
Actually, Council District 4, Mr. President.
Okay, agenda's in error, so with that correction on item 8, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearing is open and closed. Do we have a motion on item number 8? Mr. Lavand is in the back taking pictures. Let's hold this on the desk. Next item.
Item 9 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 4 as well. The recommendation is to grant the application. A motion is required.
There are no speaker cards. Public hearing is open and closed. Let's hold this on the desk. Next item.
On item 10, the applicant has requested a continuance to September 15.
Okay, any objection to continuing item number 10 to September 15? Seeing no objection, item 10 is continued. Mr. Lavand is now back in chambers. We have public convenience and necessity items 8 and 9 in your district, Mr. Lavand. Okay, let's hold this on the desk. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 38 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been submitted and distributed on items 16, 21, and 27. On item 30, the Plum Committee has concurred with the Public Safety Committee's recommendation, and that report has also been distributed. Additionally, on items 18 and 33, amending motions have been circulated.
Okay, members 11 through 38 now before us. Public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Items 31 and 34 have been continued. Mr. Parks.
Item 18, we have an amendment. We'd like to hold this special to make that amendment.
Mr. Parks calls item 18 special. Any other specials? If not, then we can without objection continue, consider item 33 as amended on the balance of the items. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 39 is a commission reappointment. Do you wish to consider at this time?
Let's hold item 39 temporarily on the desk. We'll take 39 first, then public comment, then the balance of the items called special. Next items, please.
Items 40 through 53 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
40 through 53 now before us without objection. The council will consider these matters today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Do we have any requests for specials on 39 through 53, 40 through 53? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 54 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Okay, and again, no speaker cards on item 54, satisfying the public hearings. Anybody wishing to call 54 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, all matters forthwith, please, that are approved today. Members, let's now temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda, and, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Lavand, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum.
Thank you very much. Members, the special meeting is now in session. First order of business, please.
Items 1 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, public hearings have been held, and items 1 through 4, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials? Mr. Villagosa.
Yes, item 2.
Item 2 called special by Mr. Villagosa. Mr. Zine.
1.
Item 1 called special by Mr. Zine, leaving items 3 and 4. Any additional requests for specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Items 3 and 4 are the special agenda. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 5 through 9 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Amending motions have been distributed to all members on items 6 and 9.
Members, items 5 through 9 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Requests for specials, Mr. Zine and Mr. Parks. 6 called special by Mr. Zine. 8 called special by Mr. Parks. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. So on the special agenda, members, items 1, 2, 6, and 8 have been called special. Let's temporarily recess the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and proceed next to item 39, which is council consideration of a commission appointment by the mayor.
That, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's the reappointment of Ms. Erica Brunson to the Board of Animal Services Commissioners.
And if Ms. Brunson would please come forward at this time. We do have a committee report, colleagues recommending approval. Ms. Brunson, you can sit here at the front table. And thank you for your patience this morning. We do have a committee report, colleagues recommending approval.
It was long and fascinating. Thank you very much. I enjoyed it. Special about Councilwoman Reyes's housing situation.
We appreciate your service to the city as well. Let me recognize Ms. Miskowski for some comments.
I think the Public Safety Committee waived this from committee because we just confirmed Ms. Brunson originally, just about a month ago, to fill the end of an expired term. We were impressed with her commitment, with her experience and knowledge in this field. She had been very active in terms of volunteer activities and persuading, actually, the city of L.A. to come up with some matching funds to operate the mobile van that we have for spay and neuter that is going out into communities to help raise the level of spaying and neuting that is going on, particularly with the coupons that we have. So Ms. Brunson has been a participant actively for many years, even prior to her service. So I think she was a very good selection and will continue to do good work for our Animal Services Commission.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, and your patience is wonderful. Since it's now 12:20 in the afternoon, I know you've been sitting there along with the girl softball team from 10 o'clock this morning, so we appreciate your patience. A major issue for the Mountain Fire District is coyotes, and we had a brief discussion earlier. You weren't at the meeting that we had, you were away. We had a community meeting at Pierce College. Animal Services was there, a lot of community support, and everyone's in agreement, we need to address the issue, not kill the coyotes, but somehow do something to relocate because of the continuing problem that's occurring in the Mountain Fire District within my district and adjoining districts. I just want to bring that to your attention, that we're putting together a task force from different groups to see how we can work together to come up with a solution to the continuing problem that the coyotes are causing within the community, small animals. We know that there was a tragic death a number of years ago in Glendale, and our concern is to maintain safety, but as the dens continue to prosper in that community and to continue to expand, their territory seems to be increasing widely. I know some areas have problems with dogs running loose on leash, without a leash, but the biggest problem that we have, the complaints that we get, are the coyotes that are really becoming a more serious problem, I'm sure in the 12th District and in my district and the 5th District, but everything, Sunset Boulevard on north. So I just bring that to your attention on the commission, to keep that in mind. We want to work with the animal rights groups, we want to work with the communities, and there's got to be some balance, hopefully, we can bring together to make it safe before we have more tragedies, which we don't want to have. Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Can you put the microphone closer so we can hear you?
While you had this meeting in your district, I attended an international symposium in Breckenridge, Colorado, on long-term sterilization of wildlife and dogs and cat domestic animals. And I sent you a letter with a contact for the U.S. Fish and Game. They are doing a pilot program in Utah to sterilize coyotes, the female alpha coyote. So I gave you the contact of the person to contact in the U.S. Department of Fish and Game, and apparently, the pilot program in sterilizing the alpha coyote female has been very successful.
Thank you. My staff, I haven't seen it, my staff...
I will send it to you again.
I appreciate that. We'll definitely follow up on that. And I appreciate your service on the commission.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure. I think we have a good commission. We'll do our best to make you proud of us.
And they do a lot of hard work, not just out there chasing the animals, but they're trying to make it a better place for everyone here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard on item 39? Seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, and...
Thank you, President.
Again, thank you for serving the city. Forthwith on this item and all items approved today, please. And members, that brings us to public comment for today's meeting. If I can ask the clerk to please put up a clock here. The council will call forward Mr. Michael Hezron Saint Hill for general public comment. An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Mr. Saint Hill.
My name is Michael H. Saint Hill. As usual, I need to talk to you about L.A. Police Department. Here is a file, federal case, state case, L.A. Police Department. Remind you, please, I've been a law abiding citizen all my life, God-fearing, and for the past 18 years, a black Republican, doing all the right things. A college graduate, doing all the right things in life. I have L.A. Police Department held guns to my head, L.A. Police Department had beat me up, L.A. Police Department had searched my body with their hands without a glove on and abused me terribly. I'm asking you, please, if you don't privatize the L.A. Police Department or think about it, which will help the city and the citizens of L.A. and alleviate all the liabilities from the city and releasing the police department from having, using the civil service laws to protect them. If you don't do that, at least try to give the chief full responsibility to discipline the police officers, at least the sheriff has the ability to kick the bad deputy sheriffs off. I think the city council should at least grant the chief the opportunity to, short of privatizing the police department, the opportunity to have the full ability to kick these rotten cops off of the force, because of which L.A. Police Department has a lot of them. So I'm asking you, please, to do something about it, because like I said, there's two cases here, a federal case and a state case in this file right here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly.
Our next speaker or group of speakers, if I can call forward, the South Central Farmers, beginning with Victor Ruben Campos, Mireya Aguilar, Nadine Diaz, Miguel Angel Perez, and Angela Sanchez Gonzalez, Blanca Dolores Gaetan, and Ruben Garcia Barbossi. A couple of speakers, please, on behalf of the group.
Hello, my name is Victor Ruben Campos. This is my son, Daniel Campos. I'm right here representing the South Central Farmers, 41st and Avalon, I mean Alameda, sorry. We're here, you know, what could I say, you know, just representing, you know, like, you know, we just here, you know, we don't want just, you know, for them to take our lands away, you know. That had helped us to feed, you know, our families and to keep our sons. Me and myself, I come, you know, I was in a gang when I was a son, and that has helped me, you know, stay, you know, stay out of those gangs and, you know, help, you know, help my nephews and sons, you know. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mi nombre es Blanca. Tengo 62 años y quisiera que no nos quitaran las tierras porque las necesitamos para cultivar nuestras frutas y nuestros vegetales, comer cosas frescas. Gracias.
Hi, my name is Blanca. I'm 62 years old, and I would like to ask you not to take our land away. That's the land that where we farm. We farm our vegetables and our food, and it's very nutritional for us. Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Nadine Diaz, and I'm a third-generation constituent of BH, which is better known as Boyle Heights, and also a third-generation graduate of the University of Southern California. As you know, USC School of Social Work supports the South Central Farmers, and I would like to bring to your attention today, approximately a month ago, I was hired by the dean to develop a matrix for voter education and voter registration. And as you all know, it's very imperative that voting in this country and in this state is a voice of power. And we are working collectively with other universities, UCLA, Whittier College, CSUN, Azusa Pacific College, other grassroots leaders to increase voter registration and education. And I am honored to announce to you today that the South Central Farmers have opened up their farm so that we can have a voting polling place where constituents and new voters can obtain information about registration, about voting, and about the propositions that will be on the ballot in November, too. Many of you are going to be running again in your CD districts. As Councilman Parks, we understand that you will be running for mayor as well. Councilman Villagosa, at the present time, you are thinking about it. So this is very important, and remember, voting is what makes a difference in this city, in this state, and in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, please.
Again, for the record, must be stated, for the South Central Farmers, Los Angeles Coalition stands in support. Aquí estamos y no los vamos, tierra libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 5 was being held on the desk for a motion.
Mr. Smith, we need a motion on item number 5.
Move that we deny the permit without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That motion is adopted. Next item, item number 6. We, in error, said we had a card on item number 6. We do now. We have a card on item 6 from the special agenda, but we do, however, need a motion from Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I move that we grant this application.
Okay, any further discussion? Item number 6. Seeing none, let's open the roll. Okay. Any further discussion? Item number six. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Rolling right along, next item.
Item seven was being held on the desk, and as much as there were cards from the public.
Item number seven now before us, and we do want to hear from Elizabeth Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. The vault at 215 West Sixth Street obtained a conditional use permit from the Los Angeles Planning Department on July 29, 2004. This project was vetted with Councilman Villagosa's office, the Los Angeles Police Department, the Community Redevelopment Agency, the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and D. Lang. The conditions of the CUP, as well as an extensive security plan, were developed with input from all of the agencies listed above. This project is in line with the city plan for the historic core district, helping to reach the objectives of the plan to restore and enhance the district, as well as the community who resides there. Sed Moses and Mark Smith, the operators, are stakeholders in the community. They reside in downtown Los Angeles. They own and operate Bankett, as well as the newly remodeled and opened Golden Gopher. The vault will provide a minimum of 40 new jobs in this residency. They're committed to working with Chrysalis, as well as the L.A. Coalition, to provide jobs to local residents. Finally, this location provides an incredibly unique architectural design. This building was built in 1910. The vaults that are housed in this project are some of the most pristine vaults that L.A. has ever seen, and we want the community to be able to participate and look at the architecture of this building. They are positive people. They have a very strong record operationally, and they do plan on employing within the local residency. Therefore, I would hope that you would vote in support of this piece of end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number seven. Mr. Villagosa.
Mr. President and members, I'd like to move to grant the application for the PCN as requested.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll. And Mr. Villagosa's motion, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items eight and nine were being held on the desk for a motion from Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, is he back with us? He was here a minute ago?
In the back.
Okay, let's proceed to the next item. We'll come back to items eight and nine.
Item 18 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a motion going forward, 18A. Mainly what we're requesting is that the housing authority come back to committee and ask that they give us some insight as to their administration of their current funding. What we have before us today is a proposal in which Housing Department is spending almost $3 million of money for a very important cause, and that's to fund AIDS housing until March of next year. There is no funding to go beyond March, and what we need is Housing to come forward and to discuss how their priorities to address that issue after March of next year as relates to their priorities. And so we'd like to move that we adopt motion 18A to be added to the council report.
Anything further on this item? If not, let's open the roll. Without objection, as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And brings us back to items eight and nine, Mr. Labange.
I'm okay with eight and nine. Thank you.
Is that a motion to grant?
I moved that I'm okay with eight and nine. Thank you.
Okay.
Don't break the rules.
You got that, Mr. Clerk, right?
Is that a motion to grant the application, Mr. Labange?
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those both are approved. And if that's the regular, end of the regular meeting agenda and the items called special--
President, Mr. President, may I ask--
You can ask anything, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. The item concerning Highway 101, which we voted on today, 35, be continued to our next meeting. We approved it today, but I want to continue it because I think we should speak to it.
Okay.
And I don't want to speak to it today.
Sounds like a motion for reconsideration.
Motion for reconsideration to continue. Thank you.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 35 is reconsidered, and without objection, continued until, Mr. Labange, the Wednesday when we get back?
Mr. Clerk.
That would be August 3rd.
Which is a what day of the week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday would be August 3rd.
Let's go August 4th.
Wednesday, August 4th.
August 4th.
August 4th, without objection. Mr. Parks?
Is everything forthwith today?
Everything is forthwith today. Let's, once again, temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. Let's come back to the special meeting agenda where we have items one, two, six, and eight called special. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item one was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue regarding the reinstatement of City's Wildlife Officer Program, I think we have some representatives here from Animal Services, and just a couple of brief questions. I know that these gentlemen were at our Pierce College Community Program Committee, the Animal Services Commission meeting, dealing with wild animals, coyotes. And if you could just briefly explain how many people assigned to this program, the Wildlife Program, citywide, and what they do?
Sure. Commander David DeLiberto, Director of Field Operations, along with Officer Troy Boswell, who's one of our wildlife officers. We have two officers that are assigned, that had been assigned citywide, to handle wildlife calls, focusing mostly on coyote issues, mountain lion issues, issues that are more public safety-type issues. One of their main functions was education, speaking to schools, to homeowners' associations, and basically speaking daily, probably hourly, to residents who call in with concerns, educating them how to coexist with the coyotes.
And what we're asking for is the reinstatement of those two positions. I know a lot of that service goes to the San Fernando Valley because of the wildlife, because of the terrain of the San Fernando Valley, from Chatsworth, Bonnata Hills, Northridge, West Hills, Woodland Hills, Tarzana, Encino, even into Hollywood, where we have the Mahaloan Corridor. And two personnel were cut from the budget, as I understand?
That's correct.
And if they're not there, what would happen to the, whether it's a raccoon, which I caught in the cage that Animal Services provided, and they came and then retrieved it, which are very vicious when they're caged, and the other animals that roam in their natural inhabitant, unfortunately for them, humans have occupied and more and more occupying that territory. Without those positions, what happens to the calls that come in for those particular animals?
Well, the first thing that I'd like to let you know, as well as, believe it or not, statistically, we actually got more complaints in our metro area than we did in the valley for coyotes and other type of wildlife. So it is, you know, on this side of the hill, Griffith Park, Silver Lake, a lot of other areas, I mean, stretching all the way down to Wilmington and San Pedro, we've had coyote complaints basically everywhere in the city. What happened is, is without these two officers, we revert to the way that we had been doing it approximately the last eight years, which is the rank-and-file officers who are out there handling the vicious dog complaints, the injured animal complaints. They also would respond to the public safety-type wild animal complaints. The biggest loss to the constituency would be sort of the customer service aspect. In other words, if you had an injured, a sick, or a vicious wild animal in your backyard, we have an officer to respond to it, albeit an officer who's also charged with responding to vicious, sick, and injured domestic animals. But that officer does not have the time to spend 15, 20 minutes at somebody's residence or on the phone with somebody explaining to them, you know, how to coyote-proof their backyard, for instance. The only thing that officer would be able to do would be to hand them a brochure.
And with the police department, they have special operations. With the fire department, they have special operations. It used to be that there was a little ambulance that would float around, the brown ambulance, and then the paramedics came aboard. And now there's a specialized service. So would you put this in that same category as a specialized service for that unique situation that occurs in large portions of the city?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, so the funding was cut in that position. So all you need is additional funding. Has that position already been cut, or is it--
Those two positions, yes.
Okay, so we don't have them at this particular time?
That is correct.
So we're asking for the reinstatement of those two wildlife positions to Animal Services?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me answer to conclude, Mr. Zine.
Yeah, I just want to find out from the CAO or the CLA or whomever, what we need to do to reappoint those two positions.
Well, that's what this motion is asking for. So when we approve the motion, then we'll schedule that report in committee.
And these were cut July 1st?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're almost a month into it, and if we get another month into it, and then the season's gone, so--
Well, we need the CAO's help to find the money. They can't find the money until we direct them to, and we can't direct them to until we vote on the motion. Let me recognize Mr. Labange next.
Dennis, thank you very much, Dennis. It's been a busy morning. And it's a busy Southern California now because of the probable cause of drought that affects Southern Californian animals that were not known to come into neighborhoods are now coming into neighborhoods. I believe there was a calabasas incident where a bear came into a pool or a spa, if you will. We have a mountain lion sighting in Griffith Park. Although, members, Jim McQuiston told me at a neighborhood meeting last night, when he was a kid, he used to see one sleep down near Amesbury Road, interesting enough. In our committee meeting, this photograph here of a pack of four coyotes, I just passed it around, Martin, in a neighborhood street off of Silver Lake, it is impacting us throughout. When you have reports of coyotes in Terminal Island, we need to get wildlife officers back. And, members, I ask that we approve this as presented, because we're all going to have a little bit of a break, but the wildlife is going to continue. And we need to get the CAO to come back to us. And I know I talked to Ms. Misakowski to say I have to find funds to get this here, but wildlife affects all of the districts, not just the 11th and the 5th and the 2nd and the 4th, but the 15th and throughout the city of Los Angeles, the 7th. It has an impact throughout, with the back door, the 7th district's the back door to the Angeles National Forest. And so it's very important that we ask the CAO to come back, and then it will go to finance, it will go to personnel, and try to get these people back. Does Animal Services want these people back?
Yes.
Good. And the way to get them back is to identify funds to pay for those positions that became specialists in wildlife officers. Because right now, they're answering all kinds of calls, loose dogs, special animals underneath houses, things of this nature here. We need specialized wildlife officers. Members, I just asked you to approve. The report has stood as presented, excuse me. And then we get back and hear in late, in August or in September early, what we could do to reinstate these positions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, or Mr. President, too. I was going to ask, answer Mr. Zine in terms of asking what we need to do. One, let's adopt this report. Let's ask for the CAO to report back to us on the process, which would be, one, reinstating the positions. Then it would have to probably go to personnel for waiving whether or not they are in a freeze or not a freeze. And then we'd have to look at budget and finance on the financings. But I think, other than, as Mr. Labange suggested, wait until we come back, I think we, within the next three weeks, we have, next week, we're not going to be here. If we act today, it goes forthwith, we can ask the CAO to report back and have something either directly in committee or perhaps budget and finance, depending on whether the two committee chairs want to waive. The other corollary steps would have to be the creation of positions along with either a waiver of the ability to fill the positions and asking personnel whether or not there are people ready to fill the positions. Because there's two different things. There's the program, and then there's the positions. And the program can involve a lot of other things, including education, information, providing information to our communities. So let's not take it in a belabored way. Let's take it at least relative to reinstating some positions, doing it as quickly as possible before we break by the end of August, and ask the CAO to report back within that timeframe.
Ms. Zine.
Yeah, I would have no problem waiving that from my personnel committee. I had to ask one more question on this. Other than the two wildlife officers in this budget, were there any other positions cut from Animal Services field positions?
No.
So of the entire deployment, two positions were cut, which is wildlife, everything else was left intact?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, please. All items approved today are going forthwith.
Item two was called special by Councilmember Villagosa.
Mr. Villagosa.
Yes, Mr. Council President, on today's special council agenda, there's a recommendation of a one-year, $1.25 million contract extension for outside legal services for the DWP. This recommendation, members, is an amended request from the Department of Water and Power, following concerns that I raised and you agreed with when the DWP sought to increase the contract by $7.5 million over three years for outside legal services. It's clear to me, and I hope clear to all of you, that the department is now coming back, saying this is what was originally a $7.5 million contract for legal services now should be reduced to a million. If we hadn't engaged in the debate that we did on that day and raised the concerns, we'd be looking at a $7.5 million contract. That, in my mind, causes me a great deal of concern. On the one hand, what it says is that our council is going to be much more vigilant with the department. On the other, it says that there, in my mind, still a number of issues with respect to mismanagement and the lack of contracting oversight at the department. And so I am voting against this revised request nonetheless, not because I'm at this point questioning the smaller-sized contract, but because I do believe that we're going to have to ensure that we put in place contracting and contract monitoring system that will prevent the lapses in management oversight that allowed both the PR billings and the original recommendation for a $7.5 million outside legal services contract. It seems to me that if we don't do that, all we are doing here are changing lightbulbs one at a time. We're not doing anything to address what is clear, both from all of the articles, including Mr. Lopez's column today, that the DWP and other departments, but certainly the DWP, does not understand the need to provide the kind of contract management and oversight that is going to protect the taxpayers of Los Angeles. So I rise heartened that this contract has been reduced, but very concerned nonetheless because there still is no indication on the part of the department that there's a commitment to imposing the requisite management oversight that we're going to need to ensure that our taxpayers are protected.
Mr. Carr, Dennis.
Yes, thank you very much. I chaired the committee in which the original contract and this particular revised, reduced contract actually was discussed in committee. And I just wanted to point out as well, Councilman Villagosa, that the department has acknowledged that when the original scope of the contract was drawn up, there hadn't been a federal decision handed down. And that decision was handed down in between the time that the contract was sent through the process and the time it got to us and the council. As you able to point it out, you did question it. We did send it back to committee. The department immediately and clearly said the scope has changed, and the amount of the contract was up two, but absolutely right. Why do we need an up two for $7.5 million if, in fact, the scope is drastically less? And that's what we have before us. But I just wanted to make clear for the viewers, you mentioned, Mr. Villagosa, that you're going to be voting no on this, which is your prerogative. But this particular contract, as it stands right now, this particular contract in and of itself-- of itself, is there a problem with that one? Or it's just the process? We need to be better at the process in the future?
May I respond? Yeah, thank you. I thought I made it clear, but thank you, Mr. Cardenas. My issue is not now with the outside contract, this $1.25...
The one before us.
The one before us, as much as it is with the lack of contract oversight in the department. Last week, a number of us, City Attorney Dalgadoio, the Controller Chick, Mr. Weiss and myself, have raised concerns about mismanagement and the failure to oversee contracts. We've opened the paper almost every day over the last few days with respect to PR contracts that cause us a great deal of concern. And my hope is, and the reason why I'm voting no is not so much on the essence of this contract, you're correct, but on the failure of the department to provide the management mechanisms to assure that we're protecting the taxpayers.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be voting yes on this contract before us today. And at the same time, I do agree with Councilmember Vieragosa and all of us who are concerned about the contracting that's going, not only in the proprietary departments like the Department of Water and Power, but throughout the city. And I hope that we get a grasp and a scope of what's been going on in the past, make sure that we correct the way we handle things today and in the future, and certainly make sure that we tighten our belts and make sure that the constituents' money is used properly, for example, whether it be ratepayer money or whether it's taxpayer money. So thank you very much, Mr. Vieragosa, for bringing this up.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I wanted to push my button because I really appreciate what you just said, Mr. Cardenas. I know how hard you've been working as chair of that committee, and you have not been shy. You have not been shy at insisting that the people of this city, taxpayers, the ratepayers, get a better deal and that there be more openness and more transparency when it comes to these decisions. And I don't know, colleagues, how many of you have had the chance to go out there and talk with folks in the community in the last couple of days? I guess it's been this week that all these DWP articles have been breaking. But I've had the chance to talk with people in community settings. And let me tell you, to say the public is skeptical about the latest DWP hike is an extraordinary understatement. They were more than skeptical to begin with, and after the revelations of last week, it's gone straight downhill from skepticism, and we are circling the drain towards disgust. I don't see how, if you care about ensuring that there is public confidence in our public decisions, I don't see how you can't want to implement some meaningful reforms right now, and perhaps not just at that one proprietary, but at all of them. That's why a couple of us introduced a motion earlier this week to put that rate hike on hold while we work on a package of meaningful reforms. Ms. Gruel signed that motion, Mr. Zine signed that motion. And I think that as you go out in the coming weeks and talk with members of your communities, you will see that this is an issue which we must confront right now in Los Angeles. It is front and square in front of us. And I really just want to once again say to Mr. Cardenas, I really appreciate the leadership role that you've taken on this so far, and I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks as we continue to try to make these reforms, which they were needed a long time ago, but right now, they are desperately needed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree more with some of the sentiment, but it's not a new sentiment. Members, we had this six months ago, seven months ago, when we were looking at the airport and contractors. We all had the flurry of motions then. Ms. Gruel and I brought in a motion to say we needed the overall comprehensive contracting practice. Airports had said they were going to do one. We said, we're going to do one because we didn't want it done by any individual agency. We had a Blue Ribbon Committee that was appointed by the mayor that was headed by Mr. Chmerinsky that was supposed to be reporting back. Again, I haven't seen it yet. I know Mr. Chmerinsky, I believe, left for his new assignment and his new life relation, almost, okay. So he's working on that report before he leaves. But when that report comes, this should be part of it. Having said that, we know it's important. We know that we can just sit here and see not only what the recent weeks have been, we can probably predict that in the future weeks, we're going to have more of the same. We need to change. We've known we need to change, and we need the CAO and this Blue Ribbon Committee and all of the agencies putting together explicit, concrete, detailed oversight management and then set those places, those things in motion. Having said that, Mr. Cardenas is absolutely right. We looked at this particular contract. This has been an important and valuable contract. This has been a contract that has put a firm in who has access in the federal arena for areas that were of critical importance to our ratepayers, to our DWP and our ability to manage it ourselves in the aftermath of deregulation chaos. So this firm has been doing good things. It's not only been the need for DWP to have its own inside counsel, but our outside counsel. One of the things that a contract like this, I think, does point out is that we keep saying this department, DWP, this department is responsible. And that may be so, but it is actually outside counsel that is coordinated and overseen by the city attorney as well. So this one may, you know, we need both agencies, not just the agency that's receiving the benefit, but also the city attorney who is helping and supporting outside legal advice to be looking at it. Because, again, what the city attorney can do in-house, we should be doing in-house. But again, I think we are all very anxiously awaiting and should get a report back in as near future time as possible on that Blue Ribbon Committee and the CAO as to where are we, what are we putting forth. It's going to be controversial. It's going to put more headlines in the paper, but it's got to be done. And I think we should see those reports back as soon as possible.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Again, I don't want to repeat what has already been said, but as Ms. Misakowski mentioned, we did introduce a motion in December of last year where we talked about improving the contracting process at all three proprietary departments. Ms. Hahn and I were present at a hearing we held in the Harbor Department with the community and talking about their practices, whether it be relative to minutes being kept in those executive sessions, whether it be related to the fact of who participated in those discussions. And it's unfortunate, we're still getting some mixed messages about whether they are actually implementing the mayor's executive order, which asks that they not participate in those. And so I think that we stand in support of the questions that have been raised by Mr. Vieragosa and other members of the city council in looking at a structural change in the way our proprietary departments respond. Because, as many of my constituents have said as well, when they write their check to the Department of Water and Power, they don't say Department of Water and Power, Proprietary Department, that the city council doesn't operate. And when you land at the LAX Airport, it doesn't say Proprietary Department. It says City of Los Angeles, and the port is the same. So I think the message is loud and clear from this body that the old days are over as far as the lack of transparency in ensuring that we have contracts that respond to that. And so I too am going to support this today because it has been, again, I think, reduced to the amount that seems reasonable in some of the changes. But I am certain that all the proprietary departments are probably listening today as we discuss this. And we'll be coming back from our Audits and Government Efficiency Committee, again, with a comprehensive approach that will take into consideration the mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission and those other reports we are getting back from our CAO and CLA. So I just wanted to add my two cents on that and to say that we do need to look at structural reform because unless we do that, we will continue to see, you know, an issue here, an issue there without setting real, clear standards and checks and balances. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Council President Weiss. You haven't said much for obvious reasons. That's called a hot seat. Well, no, that's the hot seat, and I appreciate you being there. We always talk about the drain on the general fund.
Yes, sir.
And the general fund is what deploys our police, our fire, and other activities that we provide. But I looked at this, and it's not the general fund because it says in here, there's no impact on the general fund. But it does say, paid entirely by power revenue funds. And as I understand, power revenue funds are funds that the consumers pay for the power that goes into their residence or commercial?
Yes.
So when rates go up, power rates go up, the consumer's paying for that, the business is paying for that. So they're going to pay for that out of those funds.
That is correct.
Not of the general fund. And the other question I have, because I look at it as a consumer and a resident in Los Angeles, if I'm paying sales tax or I'm paying my water and power rates, whatever the case may be, those are dollars that come out of my pocket. And for all the consumers of Los Angeles and the people on fixed income, when a rate increase takes effect, it impacts them. And when we look at this and some of the controversy that's taken place, people look at that to say, it's money that I'm paying. Whether it's the general fund or the power revenue fund or whatever fund, it's money that I'm paying for a service. The issue of attorneys, the city attorney's office is well-staffed. I know that there are attorneys assigned to Water and Power. Why can't we use in-house attorneys since we already have a monopoly on water and power in the city of Los Angeles? Why do we have to go to outside counsel?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. I want to give you a chance to say something.
Thank you very much. First, let me identify myself. I am Marcia Haberkaimai. I am an Assistant City Attorney.
All right, there you go. And you're assigned to Water and Power?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there you go. So you're the expert to answer that question?
Well, I don't know, but I'll try.
Thank you.
The reason we use outside counsel is we have, at this time, two attorneys assigned to specifically regulatory issues and a third assigned to state regulatory issues, meaning CPUC and state efforts attempting to take our transmission. The two attorneys that are assigned to the regulatory federal arena, I am one and the other one is Fay Chu, we draft and participate in many motions. We do a lot of filings on our own in terms of the knowledge transfer. I started with DWP five years ago and have been assigned to FERC regulations since. But we are not knowledgeable in all the nuances and difficulties that this department faces with FERC's attempt to make us into a regulated agency. On a daily basis, there is a new headline relative to the investigation of the energy crisis. We are still trying to get FERC to release the $170 million and make filings almost weekly relative to that, that is owed the department and the citizens of the city of Los Angeles to keep the rates where they are. So we have two attorneys in our office. We have approximately, we have one lead attorney in the Van Ness Feldman office that works with us. And then when there's a specialized issue, for instance, appeals in the Ninth Circuit or the DC Circuit, we work with them in crafting the briefs so that if you were to go outside and hire the outside counsel, for instance, on a particular issue and had to pay $100 on the dollar, that's not what you're paying today. You're paying $0.75 or $0.60 on the dollar because of the knowledge transfer and the efforts that Ms. Chu and I have engaged in to take over quantities of the work. So as time goes on, we become more knowledgeable. But unfortunately, the volume of work grows exponentially due to the fact that FERC sees our transmission and our generation as something they want to control, and they want to take over and take it from the citizens of the city of Los Angeles who have paid to construct that very transmission and generation.
I think one message that you could probably send to the consumers of Los Angeles is that information because most consumers don't realize that. They don't read it, they don't know about it. And if they learned about it, then they'd probably be much more supportive of the fact that this outside counsel is there for that particular purpose. What the consumer sees is the bill that comes in, and when it's summertime, you know how much the rates go up. I appreciate your appearance here and appreciate your candor on this particular subject. So the bottom line is there's three deputy city attorneys assigned to Water and Power.
Who engage in the regulatory agency, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lutdo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question. I don't know if anybody here can speak to this, maybe Councilmember Cardenas or Ms. Akowski. What is the controller's position on this item? And trying to keep up with what's happened with DWP right now is just like, you know, moving target. And I echo the concerns that a few people have raised about what's happening in my district and people constantly asking the question. Mr. Zine just raised a good question about, I mean, just the logical, why can't some of this be done internal? I'm assuming through committee that's been vetted, and I obviously have to trust and rely on my colleagues who serve on those committees that they've done that. But I just, is there anybody here that can speak to either the city attorney or the city clerk's position on this item?
The city attorney is in support of this motion.
City clerk, I mean, excuse me, city controller? Nobody knows? Anybody know?
Ms. Misakowski.
The controller did not, we had a full hearing in committee, the controller just did not come forward. And look at this, the controller does not review every contract, only those per audits that she finds problems with.
I understand that, but she's looking at DWP right now in terms of some of the questions Councilmember Vieragosa raised. And now, the position of the city attorney is, going back to Mr. Zine's questions, is that not only is this, I'm not looking for the legalities behind the contract and have we followed every, have we dotted every i and all of that in terms of the process? I got to assume that that wouldn't have gotten to this point if it hadn't been. But just on the necessity and your point about there not being enough resources in the DWP legal team to be able to handle the work that this contract would cover. Is the city attorney offering an opinion on that, on that issue?
Yes, sir, that's why I am here, because we definitely need the support and the expertise that Van Ness Feldman will provide. We don't have it in-house.
Exactly. That's what was clarified both here on the council last time we touched on that, and in committee, we went in depth about the expertise of this particular firm and what is in question. For example, what happens out of Washington, DC, a US senator or a congressional member could get the idea that they would like to require the Department of Water and Power to give up some of its capacity on our power lines. Our power lines are an extent of billions of dollars of assets, and those are the kinds of things that they're protecting. And in addition to that, this particular firm is going to be dealing with specific issues and also making sure that we're preventative as well. Mr. Cardenas, I appreciate that, and I apologize for not clarifying enough. I'm very clear that that has been sort of the basis of the item. But in the last couple of weeks, there's been obviously a series of questions raised by two citywide elected officials on contracting in the DWP. And I guess the question more is, city attorney's position as of today has not changed on the necessity for this contract?
That is correct.
Okay.
And also, let me make reference, you talked about the controller, if they're present here or in committee. From what I recall, we didn't have a presentation or a statement made by the controller's office, yet at the same time, at any time, because she is a separate entity in the city and elected citywide, she has the authority and ability to go ahead and either investigate or pull in or question any contract she would like. So whether or not she will or is going to remains to be seen. But in committee, she did not.
All right, no, I appreciate the clarification, the comments from my colleagues. And anyway, I don't think there are any other questions for myself.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. City Attorney's Office at Water and Power is still independent. It's not Water and Power that hires a city attorney.
That is correct.
City attorney. City attorney sometimes needs expertise to deal, and as Mr. Cardenas spoke of earlier, the magnitude, I know there's a big challenge out at Fort Irwin where the federal government wanted to ban, let's say, Los Angeles, which was there long before in bringing transmission through. So this is very important on that issue there. I just wanted to stand, though, and this is very important, that there's light on all issues that relate to Water and Power. But today, there's someone in 110-degree heat on top of a transmission line, bringing power to Los Angeles, and someone somewhere making sure the quality of water is there for Los Angeles. And that has to continue to be the focus of trying to deliver that service to the city. And at the same time, we have to scrutinize on these areas, but get expertise. How many of you councilmembers get expertise? I get expertise sometimes. That's important to have and able to do our job. I thank you, and I thank all those who work, but we've got to work harder and more effectively at Water and Power. And the city attorney has got to work harder and more focused and do a greater job because there's a team of people who are very dedicated over there, both city attorney and DWP to deliver for Los Angeles. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vieragosa. Mr. Cardenas. Okay? Anything further? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Let's reopen the roll here, give all members an opportunity to vote. Roll is open, members. Roll is open, members. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item 6 was called special by Councilmember Zine. Amending motion 6A has been distributed, and there was a card from the public.
We do have a card from the public. Then we call upon Jim McQuiston before recognizing Mr. Zine.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. When I started working with the Hollywood redevelopment, I was astonished to find out that the lowest-income area in Los Angeles was Hollywood in the redevelopment area. It's not in South LA. And that astonished me. This proposal for the empowerment zone seems like it's a very good idea. My factory, though, is in an area, and if you will read the report, that particular census area is going to be eliminated from the empowerment zone. In other words, we're going to cut out the manufacturing area from the empowerment zone. And I questioned that. That's the only question I have. This is supposed to be a tentative census, and I hope it remains tentative. The amendment seems to put it in question whether or not it's going to be thrown out or not. And that was my only comment on this.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number 6. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly on this item. The state, California State Legislature, released a request for proposals for three new state enterprise zones, and there's a request for one in the Hollywood area. And I would just ask that if we receive that, if it's granted, that the matter come back to Personnel Committee regarding the number of personnel that will be required to staff that. If we are fortunate enough to have the state give us that grant for that state enterprise zone within the Hollywood area, then it would come back to Personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, then with that amending request, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 8 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to call item 8 special because it's a unique opportunity in which we're able to acquire about 22 acres of green space all at one time. Many of you have driven the corridor on La Brea between Coliseum and Stalker. If you notice on the west side, the green belt of the supervisor, Yvonne Burke's area, and also the Kenny Hahn Park on the west side. But then if you look on the east side, you see the barren land that was the product of a fire, the Baldwin Hills Fire from years ago. And so what we have taken about six or seven months, and we have to really thank Mike Hernandez, who did most of the footwork on it, and then also Mr. Weiss for getting it out of the committee, that we have the opportunity now that we'll develop a green space between Norman Houston Park and Jim Gilliam Park, in which now the Baldwin Hills Conservancy has decided that they will fund the development. This property has had a five-year history of lack of taxes, which now allows the county to take that over for the LA County Wreckin' Park Department and now the Baldwin Hills Conservancy. So within one swoop, we'll end up with 22-plus acres of green space that will connect the 8th and the 10th District in the City of LA from the corridor of La Brea. And so I just wanted to thank Mr. Weiss for getting it out of committee and Mr. Mike Hernandez for doing all the legwork, and also Mrs. Yvonne Burke for putting this together for us. But it'd be a major benefit for the community in that regard.
Mr. Dudlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I just wanted to rise and congratulate Councilmember Parks and acknowledge again Mike Hernandez and everybody. It's very creative. For those of you that have been in this side of town, just to hear this opportunity is going to be really hailed in the community as a great victory. Yvonne Brathwaite Burke years ago had secured funding for the west side of the street, the LA Conservation Corps, and a number of other people worked on that. So this is exciting. I hope I live long enough to see the fruits of it, Mr. Parks, but it's a great idea. Congratulations.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And I believe that's the last item on the desk from the special agenda. Then in that case, let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 4th, and Tuesday, August 10th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 11th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two announcements in behalf of the 9th District, Mrs. Perry. She would like the community to be aware that on Saturday, July 31st, the 9th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival on Central Avenue between 42nd and 43rd Street, right in front of the historic Dunbar Hotel. A number of noted artists, Barbara Morrison, the Dwight Triple Band, Susie Hansen, Latin Jazz Band, a variety of other artists. But that would be both Saturday, the 31st, Sunday, August 1st. On Saturday, it would go from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Sunday, noon to 7:00. And it's sponsored by Council District 9, CRA, Cultural Affairs, and also a variety of other activities. The last one I have is that Mrs. Perry would like us to be aware that on Saturday, August 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00, at the University of Southern California Boulevard Auditorium, there will be a memorial services for Ms. Juanita Tate. And so any other information would be available at the 9th District office.
Other announcements? Mr. Dudlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just tomorrow, a reminder for people in both the 10th and the 8th Council District, Southwest Police Division will be holding their open house. Also, I want to thank my colleagues for your support, continued support on our Summer Success Program. We kick off this weekend, excuse me, this weekend coming. I know many of you won't be here next week, but Dominique De Prima, once again, has signed on to be the director. We've got a great team of collaborators from Jim Brown and Bo Taylor and Lula Washington, a lot of great people coming together to kick off year two of SOS. And we will have a midnight basketball game next Friday, encouraging everybody to come out and participate in that if you can. But much thanks to the Department of Recreation and Parks, as well as General Services Department, who all have been helping in many, many ways.
Thank you, Mr. Dudlow, and continued congratulations to you for your success on that. Other announcements? If not, colleagues, two final announcements on my part. One is, as we announced at the beginning of the meeting during the presentation with the baseball teams from LAPD and NYPD, that game. And all the activities will begin tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at El Carrizo Park in Somar. That's on Hubbard, just north of the 210 freeway. Everybody's welcome and invited. And the final announcement is, as Mr. Dudlow just referenced, this council will stand in recess next week. There will be no council meetings next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The next council meeting will be on Tuesday, August 3rd at 10:00 a.m. If there's no other announcements, do we have any adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Jeffrey S. Turner, a nationally renowned commercial law expert and leader in the legal profession, died suddenly this past Saturday, the 20, excuse me, the 17th of July, while vacationing with his family in Hawaii. He was 48 years old. He worked very closely with Mark Cohen, who was a good constituent of the 4th District. He was, Jeff was born in Kentucky in 1955, and he had the highest honors. Graduated from the University of Kentucky in '76, and then he got his law degree from Duke University. After law school, Jeff moved to Los Angeles, was admitted to the bar in 1979, and he served as chair, president of many professional committees on national, state, and local levels. He was a prolific author and lecturer and became widely respected commercial lawyer as well as popular leader in organizing the bar. He is married to, was married to Meredith Jackson and was a tremendous father to their children. Here's a horrible death of a man, 48 years old, who was a talented lawyer and a loved leader of his family, who went to Hawaii but passed away. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jeffrey S. Turner.
Other tributes? Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I ask the council to adjourn in the name of Shirley Wilcox, who was a very dear friend of the 12th Council District Office, all the staff there. She is the wife of Harry Wilcox, who is better known to people in the Valley as the operator of Pepe's go-karts at the end of the airport in Van Nuys. Good community people, very supportive of community things, particularly the Los Angeles Police Department. She's been struggling for many, many years with numerous illnesses, emphysema and others, and succumbed, of all things, to a scratch on the leg, which turned into a staph infection after struggling through many other diseases and problems. But she was a dear lady. We very loved her. They used to come in the district office all the time, bring food to the staff, and truly nice people. She succumbed on July 20th, and I ask that we adjourn in the name of Shirley Wilcox.
Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.